The next issue is two merril minutes. First one is recognition of council's achievements. In the past three months Liverpool City Council has won three important awards for innovative projects and campaigns that have made our city a better place to live, work and learn. In September Liverpool City Council's Smart Pedestrian Project won an award in the category Best Local Government Initiative at the Committee of Sydney's Smart City Awards. The victory marks the second year in a row that council has taken this award home. The judging panel recognised the project as a groundbreaking initiative that will revolutionise urban design and traffic management in the city. In October the Liverpool Innovation Precinct Committee received the Public Relations Institute of Australia Golden Target Award for Best National Advocacy and Public Affairs Campaign. The award recognised the committee's campaign for the Liverpool Hospital upgrade which secured $740 million budget commitment from the New South Wales Government. Receiving such a prestigious award highlights the successful collaborative efforts between Sydney Business Chamber, Council and South West Sydney Area Health Service on the Liverpool Innovation Precinct Committee. In November Liverpool City Council took home a Premier's Award in the category Transforming Residential Approval for our fast track Liverpool City Council Programme. The programme was praised for the innovative way it streamlined approval processes. Almost 180 applications are approved in one day, a dramatic improvement on the previous 75 day approval timeline. Winning these awards is a testament to council's efforts as an ambitious courageous and collaborative organisation that aspires to do great things for ourselves, our community and our growing city. The recommendation is, I move that council acknowledges the hard work of staff involved in the award winning projects and campaigns and congratulates them on their success. I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried unanimous and we might write to the staff involved. The second one is the success of Liverpool Remembers. To commemorate the centenary of Armisters Liverpool City Council organised a series of events and exhibitions under the programme called Liverpool Remembers. From the 20th of October 2018 to the 11th of November 2018 Liverpool hosted four events. Peace Comes to Liverpool, Visions of Peace, Freedom of the Entry Parade and Liverpool Remembers Centenary of Armisters. Our city centre came alive with a spirit of commemoration, innovative screens projecting beamed across the historic photos and community stories onto our buildings and walls. Visions of Peace was the first project of its kind to be displayed in our city. Exhibitions commemorated our ceremonies and marches brought many members of our community together. The careful organisation and execution of each event assured that our community can properly honour our servicemen and women. Our city also had a chance to pause and reflect on the importance of freedom, peace and harmony. I move that we acknowledge the work undertaken by council staff and congratulate them on putting on Liverpool Remembers Programme together in particular with Visions of Peace Digital Project, the Freedom of Entry Parade and Remembrance Day and that we write to the staff involved. I formally move that, those in favour, those against, declare it unanimous, thank you.
May I have a urgency motion?
Yes, council, what is your urgency motion?
Hopefully it magically appears on the screen here. I'll read it out while we're waiting. That council review relevant policies and procedures in consultation with the relevant external parties such as RMS and police with a view to allowing a quicker process for riskier sites when it comes to the traffic committee. Move as quick as is practically possible on scheduled works and assessments for the following: traffic calming devices along Regentville Drive Elizabeth Hills, roundabout at Jardine and Buchan Avenue Edmondson Park, Buckin, Buchan, and speed assessments and potential works along Feodor Drive Cecil Hills.
Keep going, I'm thinking.
All right, so we just heard from, I think it's Carrie, about Regentville Drive, that's one of the ones I've actually got here. She's spoken about it but essentially the process works quite clearly. Last council meeting we approved traffic calming devices, however they obviously haven't gone in quick enough to save her driver's side door. Thankfully she wasn't hurt, but within the last week I've actually been contacted by Carrie and two other people about two other traffic issues where committees either looking, the committees either approved something or our traffic guys are looking into it and there have been accidents. So the other two are Buckin, I'm going to call it Buckin, Buckin and Jardine Drive. So back in August we approved a roundabout, there have been four accidents in four months there. There is a childcare centre due to open, I think it's February next year. I don't think we can wait till February next year to put this roundabout in. And the third one is Feodor Drive Cecil Hills. Now, I think council staff have agreed to do some speed assessments along that road. I believe they've done speed assessments in the past, but there have been a number of minor accidents along there. I think there was one, like within the last couple of weeks has been two, so people going up crashing in defences, people going up the curb. This stretch of road connects up to Sandringham Drive which, and I think Carrie mentioned it earlier, where there was a fatality in January this year where the retired priest was struck by a speeding driver. So the process works, we raise things, they go to committee, committee reviews them, we then get funding, we then build them. What I'm saying here is there are clearly, you know, issues here that need to be addressed where we can't wait for the process as it goes through traffic committee. Some of them are riskier.
Okay, I think you've convinced me, but I think what I would prefer in future these sorts of motions go as notices of motion, but I take on board the urgency particularly naming those particular sites and the accidents that have happened since it's been approved within the traffic committee. I'm usually pretty loathe to approve urgency motions as my colleagues would know, but I think in this sense especially with a preschool being built in the vicinity of a roundabout, I think we do need to accelerate these three sites that you've named. So I'm willing to take it on board that it is urgent at this point of time. So I'm ruling that, so you formally moving the motion that's before us.
Happy to second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, council did. I think you've already spoken to it, but if you want to have another couple of seconds or...
Yeah, look, I would have raised this as a non, but, you know, I was contacted Tuesday, Wednesday and, you know, sort of after the cut off. I would have raised this as a non, but it happened after the cut off.
I understand. Okay, is there any opposition to that?
No, just a question though.
Yes, council.
Sorry, and fully supportive of that, but we're saying this has been through the traffic committee and it's all been approved, most of these sites, is that correct?
So what I'm asking for is that as fast as humanly possible that we get working on this.
Get a rig on.
So why don't you then just allocate the funds from the unrestricted reserve, tell staff to do it and do it straight away instead of going through, if it's that urgent, I agree with you, totally accept it, but to give a bit more beef to your motion, what I'd suggest is you allocate the funds, you tell staff to bring back the report next month or the month after with the designs and we build these things straight away instead of now consulting with everybody again and getting nowhere in six months' time.
Now, there's two parts to it. So the second part is what you've said, find the money, do it as fast as possible. The first part is actually let's review the process around how things come, how things get raised, how they go to the traffic committee and then how they get allocated. Is it possible to, I guess, to have a transit lane where things can go through a lot quicker because it's been identified that human lives are at risk, there's been a number of crashes, rather than wait two, three, four, five, six months, here's a very dangerous intersection, let's see if we can actually, if possible, bypass the traffic committee or have an emergency traffic committee to get things done quickly. So they're two separate things.
I'll just ask the CEO if that's legally possible.
The traffic committee has some relatively specific requirements around it and it is a committee that is directed, that is essentially a committee of councillors, councillors are aware. I don't see any immediate restriction on calling emergency meetings, I'd need to take that on notice though, likewise on notice where those particular works fall in the schedule of works, but happy to get back to councillors on that matter.
Okay, so there's no...
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, councillor Kellyender.
So with some of these sites that are riskier, can they be dealt with under delegation by RMS and the police?
I'll have to take that on notice, but I don't think so. It's been a few months since I've read the committee charter, but it's fairly specific about what can be done and who can be delegated.
And councillor Rhodes?
Just a comment, Madam Mayor. Being at the traffic committee and going to those committees, I can see, I'm in agreement that, you know, these things have got to be addressed, but I think that if we start deciding as a council which ones are more relevant, we're opening up a door for people to jump the queue, to have their matters addressed. I need that...
Well, you can explain.
Hold on, councillor, councillor Rhodes has a right to speak without being interrupted.
So it's not that I'm against it, it's the review relevant policies and procedures, you know, to make all this happen so that you're not doing that, you're not opening up the possibility for a floodgate because we get a lot of traffic complaints here in Liverpool, surprisingly, and people want their issues addressed straight away, as we heard even in this council meeting today. The thing is that there has to be a good procedure, you can't just slot things in because then we're going to have, open the door for other people to want that same thing and we're not going to be able to do it. You need a policy and a procedure to enable us to be able to do this, was my point.
Thank you councillor Rhodes, I'm taking that as a speaker against.
Can I speak as for the question?
Thank you, councillor Chitty, you want to speak for?
Fully supportive, I'd still like to see in there some funding and timeframes and whatnot in relation to when we're going to get this done, it's good to say let's do it, but obviously staff need direction and they need money. There's an unrestricted reserve sitting there that has money in it, so councillor Hagerty, that could be an option for you. In relation to traffic committee process and everything else, as an elective representative is our call to change the, we can't just set a plan up 12 months ago and say this is what we're going to do. And when it comes to the traffic committee, and I did sit on it for a couple of years, great process and everything else, but I think it took two traffic committees, three council meetings to remove a stop sign in Macquarie Street where we could have dealt with it six months ago and it was removed. There are times where things are urgent, we are elected representatives that need to respond to the community needs and if there's proof there that there's issues, there's accidents, there's people's cars getting swiped away, sorry councillors, but as a council make a call and make the right call, and this is the right call.
Thank you councillor, any speakers against? You've already spoken against it councillor Rhodes, any other speakers against?
I just wanted to say, Madam Mayor, mine was not against the motion, it was clarifying...
Well, it sounded like it from where I sat, I'm sorry. Have we got any other speakers against? Have we got another speaker for? All right, councillor, yes councillor?
Just a comment, I've been on that traffic committee since its inception as well and the traffic committee is not a committee of council, it's actually an RMS committee and the RMS dictate as to when that committee meets and it has the final say in any matters that have to do with RMS. So if it's main roads, councils just can't simply go ahead and say we're going to do X, Y, Z, it has to go and be approved by the RMS. While I'm for all of the concerns that we all express, but there needs to be a process, it needs to be followed, otherwise things get out of hand.
Thank you councillor, any other speakers for against? Councillor, yes CEO, if you wish to make a comment.
Just to answer a question so I don't have to take it on notice, the traffic committee charter advises that the local traffic committee meets once every two months, it is silent on the matter as to whether meetings can be called outside of that. The fact that it's silent on it, I think I would feel confident saying that you can therefore do that.
Thank you, do you want your rider reply councillor Hagerty?
I certainly do, Madam Mayor.
Go for it.
I'd just like to start off by thanking councillor Rhodes for her endorsement of good governance and process, thank you for that. I don't have, as I said, I don't have an issue with the process, I think the process is quite clearly working as we've seen. We are going to install traffic calming devices on Regentville Drive, we're going to put a roundabout in Jardine and Buckin and we're also doing speed assessments on Feodor. What I'm saying is, rather than getting a whole bunch of people to sit around a meeting room every two months, is there a way to do that using technology, all this innovation? Look, we've won a few innovation awards, let's bring some innovation to the traffic committee. You can have these emergency things where you have a rep from the RMS, a rep from the police, a rep from council, they all agree, tick, tick, tick via email and we can get moving. I'm not trying to assert the process, I'm not trying to jump the queue, people's lives are in danger, someone had their car door ripped off as they were getting out their car, we've had four accidents right where a childcare centre is about to go, we saw the issue on the Northern Beaches a few years ago where a car went through a childcare centre, I don't want to see that here. This is about actually using the process but speeding it up where possible.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, can I make a suggestion that councillor Hagerty might take in to clear up, to take into consideration the advice that's given by the CEO?
What is it councillor Rhodes?
Just that we're, in that first point where you've got review relevant policies and procedures, I think that it would be to the councillors' benefit if you say to call an extraordinary meeting of the traffic committee to review the relevant policies and procedures, that way you're giving a direction to get that meeting, to get it started, to get it initiated.
Okay, thank you councillor Hagerty, are you willing to take that on board?
No, I don't want an extraordinary meeting, I want a review of the process to speed it up.
All right, we had the rider reply, no more, thank you. Those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item is on page 56.
I'll move that way, Madam Mayor.
I'll second.
I have some questions.
Yes councillor Rhodes, what is your question? Seconded by councillor Ayod. Yes, go ahead councillor Rhodes.
The table on page 76, those statistics which are referred to there, are they for the local government area or for the CBD?
Councillor, they're for the whole council area, the whole LGA.
Thank you. There is a number of, the thing that I find about the strategic...
Excuse me councillor, you need to speak to a motion or ask a question, you just can't go into dialogue.
Okay, I'm getting to the question, Madam Mayor.
Please get to the question.
Well, I don't find that council has got the necessary data to support the strategic activation of the CBD and I think that we need that, but that's the point that I'm getting to and I can ask several more questions that underpins that.
Are we on the right motion here?
Councillor, I think you're on the wrong page, we're on page 56, we're talking about the draft amendment to the Liverpool Development Control Plan, second, multiple driveways?
Oh, I'm so terribly sorry, I am in support of that, thank you.
Thank you, okay, any opposition?
I have a question in relation to that one.
Yes councillor Sheldon?
Yes, I'm not looking for detailed statistics, I'm just wondering whether there's any general idea as to the number of parking spaces that will be lost as a result of this motion going through. It's not for or against, I'm just curious as to whether in a general sense there's any projection as to the number of car parking spaces that will be lost, specific areas that are affected, thank you.
CEO?
Councillor, while I normally don't enjoy doing this, no, I really can't answer that question because it's variable on how many people take up the option for this. As a general rule of thumb, every time you put in a second driveway you lose one car space, but not everybody wants a second driveway.
Yes, and that's why I said I was talking about just general because I appreciate the limitations in relation to as much, thank you.
Councillor Rhodes, thank you, is there any opposition?
Can I just quickly thank officers for their prompt response, I think we put a timeframe on this, but for getting this one in on time to staff after the motion that called for this in relation to, and the briefing session we had the other day which clearly showed that you may lose a parking spot off the road, but what you'll tend to find is the caravan and that car then is on the driveway. So the whole idea of this was to get cars off the road and create more spots and that was demonstrated in the presentation, obviously fully support this given that I put it forward and thank you to staff for responding promptly.
I would take that as speaking for it. I'm going to put the question, those in favour, those against, declare it unanimous for the typist. Next item is on page 79.
And this is the one I have some questions?
This is the one councillor Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we go back to page 76 in the table, but we've already had that answered, that they're the statistics for the whole LGA, not the CBD.
Sorry councillor, please bear with me, I was answering the question in relation to page 76 of the previous item, just let me check.
This item starts on 78.
Okay, no, I'm sorry, it's in the confidential attachment booklet, the actual statistics which are in the table and that is on page, sorry, 286 of the confidential booklet, the table, table one.
No, it's the attachment booklet.
Yeah, the confidential, the attachment booklet, sorry.
Yeah, the attachment. 280...
Anyone move the motion?
The statistical information that's in there represents the whole local government area and is drawn from the 2016 ABS data.
My point is, and there is other items that we could go through about the strategy, the activation strategy, I don't think the council has got enough data to really give the strategy a really strong direction, we've got to answer all the things.
Councillor, I'm...
Okay, another point, another question, sorry Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
The lack of historic support by some retail operators known as for the activation strategies, could this be cause, be because of a lack of ability to convince good shops to open in the CBD?
Point of order.
Yes councillor.
That's a slur on our hardworking small business people of Liverpool.
It's not meant as a slur.
Well, Madam Mayor, anyone move the item before we start discussion?
It would be handy, but let me just rule on the point of order which takes precedence. I uphold your point of order councillor, I think you have to be careful on your descriptions of existing businesses in the CBD.
Absolutely Madam Mayor.
Now, can I just stop you there, councillor did is absolutely correct, we do need now a mover and a seconder seeing there seems to be a debate going without a mover and a seconder. Thank you councillor did, seconded, councillor Hall, thank you. Now councillor Rhodes, you wish to ask another question?
Yes, I do Madam Mayor, if you can bear with me. Another point then, the lack of historic ability to generate support in the city centre. I don't think that the strategic plan is addressing the issue that the businesses that they say are not supporting the activities, the thing is when they do participate and not many people turn up, it's a great cost to the business and so therefore they are a little bit more reluctant next time to participate. Now you can't blame a business for that because they haven't got a public purse that pays for these things, they've got to cover their costs by people that become engaged in the actual activity. Now we accept that we've got a problem, but we need in this strategic plan ways to address the real problems and the issues.
Your question councillor?
My question is, how does council intend to address that issue?
Thank you. Shh, we'll wait for an answer now councillor.
Thank you for your interest in this topic councillor, I think there is not one single answer to this. To activate a city that really has been a nine to five city and to turn it into a vibrant place requires multiple strategies and interventions. I believe that the activation initiatives that are detailed here are all directed towards overcoming some of the issues that you might have seen, you know, the perception around what Liverpool is as a place, capacity to deliver events into the night time, opportunities to look at pedestrianising streets so for foot traffic when we're out of peak hours. There are a range of strategies that work to deliver that, including public domain improvements and we're working around urban areas there, opportunities for different and variety hospitality spaces, pop up opportunities and then the longer term more complex activations around the river edge that councillors have been discussing. So I can't pinpoint one particular activity because that would be negligent to such a changing environment, it's a multiple stranded activation strategy. I think though as well, one of the things that I think is useful about the strategy is that it's designed to be an organic and living document so that we are actually responding as the environment changes and we're able to trial and experiment with new opportunities.
So one last question, Madam Mayor, would it be possible to have included into the strategy that council collect the necessary data so that we know who is living in our CBD, how many people are living in our CBD, what is the nationalities of the people that are living in our CBD and what is their disposable incomes, do they have families? We need this sort of data to be integrated into the city activation strategy.
Thank you councillor, I'll let the CEO respond.
Thank you councillor, as I believe myself and my staff responded last week, that granularity of data is available through the ABS, it certainly has been looked at to inform the strategy, so while it may not be front and centre in the strategy, we have considered those factors. I'm more than happy to include a page with that level of granular detail within the work, but it's certainly been part of the consideration when the strategy has been developed. We also have done extensive consultation with the many stakeholders in the area, which I believe is detailed in the council report.
I'm going to ask for a speaker for the motion, please could somebody...
I'll speak for it.
Thank you councillor Hagerty, speak away.
We have had many motions, many debates here in this council about activating the city, with, you know, smoking, non-smoking, events, all kinds of things, food trucks. I think it's great that rather than tackling these with piecemeal motions and piecemeal amendments, we've got an overarching holistic strategy over the next four to five years that will deliver Sydney's third CBD. I commend the motion.
Thank you, do we have a speaker against?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to suggest something for the motion if my fellow councillors agree.
Yes councillor, what is your motion?
Just in regards to the screen that's up in the mall, it's not really activated yet. I was hoping we could trial some classical music throughout the mall with the video that matches the classical music or the orchestra on the big screen throughout the mall. So have that on the screen and then have the classical music playing throughout the mall, I know this is something that they did in Parramatta which was quite successful. I'm happy for it to be just, you know, a trial period also and I was wondering if we could do advertising as well on that screen, so advertising for the universities, of course it'd be for a small fee from the universities, so University of Wollongong, Western Sydney, local restaurants, maybe some advertisements on that screen as well.
I'll let the CEO answer that.
Thank you councillor, there's nothing practically to prevent us broadcasting anything on the screen, we obviously have to pay some fees depending on the content, but that's neither here nor there, we pay fees for content all the time, so we can certainly take that on board. In relation to advertising, there are issues around advertising for our DCP, the universities are fine, hence you will have seen the banner poles, we're able to put them on the banner poles, not for profits are fine, but for commercials it's not. It's an area I would like to explore because it does generate a potential income to pay for the screen, but at present we can't do it, we'll need to look into that.
So we could trial the other suggestion?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, any speaker against? Yes councillor Sheldon, what's your question?
Yeah, a question if I may, in relation to page 78, the second last bullet point, develop a convention centre within the city centre with a full service commercial accommodation component attached. The question is, is that regarded as short term, medium term or long term activation? Thank you.
I'll ask the CEO to answer that question.
Page 78, second last bullet point.
We're just checking where it sits in that, I would, I mean, I would say that that's a medium to long term aspiration, it's certainly been something councillors will recall that was in discussion around potentially Woodward Park. That's one councillor where, to be frank, you would want to be reviewing that because market forces may actually deliver that into the CBD faster than council would be able to do it and there are certainly some conversations that are occurring there.
Yes, and the rest of the item, it's not actually categorised under any of those headings, short term, medium term or long term.
Thank you councillor, any opposition?
Madam Mayor, can I just have as an additional point added to it that council does endeavour to get the granular information that tells us how many people are living in the CBD and all the points that I mentioned?
You would like the ABS data included in the strategy?
That tells us the population of the CBD.
That's the ABS data councillor. That's the ABS data, Councillor. Okay, any other questions?
Through the chair, if I may, I just have a question for the CEO. With the trial of the classical music throughout the mall, when do you think that that could be implemented and started up?
I, we, we just need to source some content, I don't think, I think we could start it fairly soon, to be honest. I'm just looking up to my staff nodding, yep, yeah, there's no, there's no issue, we, we got the, we programmed the screen all the time.
Okay, that would be wonderful and can I just ask that you ensure that there's a large variety so people that go to the mall on a daily basis aren't listening to the same stuff every single day, please?
I'll, I'll, I'll take that one on notice, but we'll make sure that we cross from Baroque up into contemporary classical music.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Just, if I may, Mayor, quickly and support all that, in relation to if it's going to be a trial for the classical, can we look at some, and I'm being genuine here, just to see what works, maybe some Usher or some Vanilla Ice or something like that as well, I'm being, just to see what works, if we're going to try some.
A variety of music.
Bit of variety, bit of Usher.
Okay.
Thank you, Councillor, I will, I will extend from Vanilla Ice to Kanye and we will trial a range of different musical forms.
Maybe some Christmas carols during the Christmas season and holidays.
I believe Usher has a Christmas album.
I am so pleased, okay.
Madam Mayor, can I add?
Councillors, before this degenerates into just complete humour, what I would do is ask Miss Gerges to put together a programme of musical programmes and distribute it to you, yep.
And we might end up with some of the ABC themes from the children's programmes, okay.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, if the movers are minimal to this, can I add that we commend council staff for the strategy that they've brought back because I acknowledge that it has been a long drawn out process with lots of consultation and the document that we see in front of us is the result of that.
No problem, thank you very much, Councillor, is there any opposition? Thank you, I'm going to move it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried unanimously. Next item is on page eighty eight.
Move that way, thank you, Mayor.
Second.
Thank you, any opposition?
Just one very quick question. We need two point, E zero three, yes, just checking, I've got the right one this time. We need two point one nine million. How much money has already been collected from the previous DAs that we've already collected? Have we got that information?
No, we're on E zero O three, Councillor.
We're on ninety four. I'm above myself before, okay, thank you.
We're on ninety four, Councillor, I think you're just keen to get off the ramp today. Okay, we have a mover and a seconder for this item, any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare it carried, that's unanimous for the councillor typist. The next item.
Same question.
Just making sure, it's coming, okay. The next item is on page ninety four, those, we've got a mover?
Move that way, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Sheldon.
Good, Madam Mayor.
Your councillor, Pannib, yep, any opposition?
In relation to the question, if I may.
Yep.
The, it was just with respect to time periods, assuming the motion goes through, if somebody through you could estimate at best what sort of time period is required to carry out the items referred to in the motion.
Thank you, Councillor, I'll ask the CEO.
Councillor Majesty, clarification on, on your question, you're asking how long it will take for us to exhibit the VPA and then approve it?
So take it in two parts then, one to exhibit and then more importantly to do it.
Well, the intention, the intention is the exhibition for a twenty eight day period. You may recall councillors, this came to, this, a similar matter came to council in June. What we are doing is collecting the contributions from a number of, six developers over a period of time to bank to undertake the works. I can't give you an exact figure because of course we're going through the VPA negotiations with the other developers now. I'll take on notice and get back to you with an estimated timeframe and then completion of work, schedule for completion of work.
And whether it looks like there's any hurdles in relation to those VPA negotiations.
I'll, I'll take that on notice, certainly none that I've been advised of at this point in time.
Thank you, Councillor Rhodes.
Yeah, just that previous question then, Madam Mayor, I, I believe if I'm reading it correctly, it's two point one nine million that we're seeking for it. Has any money already been collected from the previous DAs or are we going back to those people?
Um, yeah, the, the, the VPA that came in, in June for council's endorsement has been finalised and we have collected the funds that were identified under that. I don't have the exact figure off the top of my head, however, it was a significant part of the contribution. It was the largest of the VPAs if I remember correctly, Mr Moore, is that correct? Yes, we'll get back to you with the exact figure. So we, we collected one, this is number two, that will go out as all VPAs must onto public exhibition and we're negotiating the other four as, as I speak.
Thank you.
Any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare it carried unanimously. Next item is on page hundred and four.
Move that way.
Second, with some questions.
Councillor Hall moving, no, yes, no?
I'll move, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Hagerty and Chitty, oh, okay.
I just have a question.
Yes, Councillor?
Why did we change the side setback from three metres?
CEO?
I'll, I'll ask Mr Moore if he can advise on that.
Three, sir, can you take me to the clause that you're referring to?
Page twenty eight, Councillor Hall, one, two, eight.
I'm going to have to take that question on notice, unless David can enlighten us?
Through the CEO, on page one hundred and five of the business papers, the, the last dot point just explains that the side setbacks have been changed from three metres to one point five and one point eight. That was as a result of feedback through the public exhibition process. Staff consider that that will be sufficient to achieve the intent of the control without adversely affecting the desired streetscape character of the low density localities.
Thank you.
Further question, Madam?
Yes, Councillor Hall.
It, it appears to state that the side setback is three metres or was three metres. What you're saying is that the distance from the fence to the, to the building is three metres?
Through the chief executive, the proposed DCP that we exhibited proposed to increase it from the standard to three metres. What we heard through the submission process was that was not necessary to still achieve the built form outcomes that we were trying to address as part of the DCP amendment. So we've gone back to the standard one point five, one point eight metre setback from the house to the side boundary.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, it's also covered on page one hundred and twelve, in particular the paragraph, third paragraph down, which is although the rear setbacks may appear to be onerous, they are similar to those used by Campbelltown City Council where boarding houses in the R two zone require a rear setback of five metres on the ground floor and ten metres on any subsequent floors. The proposed side setbacks will be changed to one point five metres on the ground floor and one point eight for the first floor so that the maximum FSR, full space ratio, can be achieved for future boarding house developments.
Thank you, Councillor.
Yep.
Yes, Councillor Rhodes, sorry, Councillor.
Madam Mayor, considering the controversy.
Hold on, are you speaking for or against or asking a question?
I think I want to propose another motion, a foreshadow motion, that this gets postponed to be addressed at the LEP revision workshop at the next weekend.
Thank you, Councillor, do you have a second? Thank you. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there's so much controversy about the boarding houses that actually infiltrating our, our local government area that a lot of people are not in favour of. The argument that we need more dwellings in our LGA is not holding water. We're already above the number of dwellings that we were proposed or targeted to by the state government. And I think that we need to take a good hard look at these facilities or these, these measurements that we are putting in because there's so many different questions about it. How can a DA be both sympathetic to existing and future building types? You know, that to me just doesn't make sense and I'm a little bit cautious of the fact that the great Australian dream was to have a house with a backyard. And I can see that being taken away from people who have deliberately, deliberately moved to this area to be able to have that housing option. And I just feel that it needs careful consideration. And I think that, that wasn't me.
We know.
I just think that it would be, it would be well to be discussed at the, at the, seeing though we're holding it next weekend, a workshop on the LEP revision, I think that we would, it would do as well to sit down and think about what we're doing here.
Thank you, Councillor, we got anybody wishes to speak for the motion?
I'd like to speak for the motion and against the foreshadowed motion. This has been discussed, we have looked into it and that's why it's before us tonight. Rather than do it as part of the LEP, which is potentially going to take years, we've gone away, you know, for the last, I don't know how long this got brought up, but six months ago we've done the work. From, if we vote for this from today forward, we can effectively deal with boarding houses. What Councillor Rhodes is suggesting is that we defer that and mix it in with the LEP and delay action on boarding houses for another twelve months. We, I think we all agree here that boarding houses are an issue. This document deals with some of those issues, it deals with it well. Let's vote on it, let's agree to it, let's get it done and let's start dealing with boarding houses today, not twelve, eighteen months into the future by throwing it in with the LEP.
Thank you, Councillor, so anybody wishes to speak against?
Tooth, no.
Against the motion, against the foreshadowed motion. Councillor, yes, Councillor?
I want to speak against the foreshadowed motion.
Would you like to speak now?
Yes.
Thank you.
I note that we have had a number of issues related to boarding houses that have come before us. I know many councillors have been contacted about them. And it's, you know, currently under state legislation, there is no residential zoning where boarding houses can be prohibited. So that means that we need to, we need to give clarity to both residents in terms of what they can expect as well as community housing providers and developers who propose these things as to what sort of direction we as a council want to go in through the mechanism of a, of a DCP, which is what is in front of us. So, you know, I won't repeat Councillor Hagerty's point about deferring this, but this is before us because of issues raised by residents and by community members. So I would urge councillors to, to actually act on it tonight.
Thank you, Councillor Chitty.
Two things, in relation to the side setback, can I ask the mover if we go back to the three metres that was proposed initially? I'd find it hard, although there would have been submissions made, that they were community submissions saying bring a boarding house closer to my boundary. Three metres is a good number and let's face it, it then makes it harder to get a boarding house on a site. I know it's a DCP control and that can be varied, but if we have those in there. So three metres I think is a, is a great number. And the second thing, in relation to, I'm not sure if it's legal, possible or still there, with childcare centres, our DCP states that you can't have two within three hundred metres. Is that something that is permissible to have in a DCP?
Yeah, through the CEO, certainly those sort of clustering controls are used in a variety of ways for a variety of different land uses, only ever in a DCP however and typically when, when backed with, you know, an evidence base. Did you want to add something, David?
Through the CEO, excuse me, that's correct, so those controls are still within the DCP, but in the last year, the SEP for educational establishments has been gazetted by the government. So there's a requirement for us to review our DCP to remove those controls so that those locational requirements are no longer included within a DCP. They're still there at the moment, but they've got no effect at the moment.
So then that's for educational facilities. Is it permissible to have a similar clause for a boarding house development?
Through the CEO, given, you can have controls within the DCP as long as they don't conflict with the controls that are within the SEP. So under the Affordable Housing SEP, you can't have controls in there that conflict, sorry, you can't have controls within our DCP that conflict with the SEP. In this regard, there are no controls in the SEP in relation to side setbacks, for instance. So the council is within its powers to, to increase it back to three metres if it wants. But in relation to some of those other controls in the SEP, we can't conflict with those.
So we can't put in there a five hundred metre radius is what you're saying, for example?
No, that's correct.
Okay, so can, I thank you for that, can I then ask the mover if they'll take on board three metre setbacks as initially proposed?
A wise man said three is a magic number, I'm happy to put it back to three.
Thank you.
I'm happy to remove my foreshadow motion, thank you.
Thank you, councillors.
So in relation, then the recommendation becomes that with one amendment being on page, whatever page it is, that table.
Page hundred and twenty eight.
So recommendation is the book with the added three metre side setbacks as initially proposed by officers or whatever words you like.
I think everybody's clear on that, Councillor. Thank you, yes, Councillor Hall?
Question is relating to DCP in general. We're going to be looking at a new LEP and then I would suggest, or would, would assume that we would automatically be looking at a new DCP as well, surely. So even though we're looking at changing these, as soon as we put a new LEP in there could be, well, I believe there should be major changes as well, depending on whether we have major changes in the LEP. Would that not be correct?
Councillor, you are correct, but it's dependent on what changes you make to, to the LEP. As, as one councillor, I think Councillor Hagerty alluded to, this will become the DCP as of when it is adopted. The LEP may not be adopted for another eighteen months, at which time, of course, the DCP needs to be looked at in relation to the, the, the LEP as adopted by council.
Thank you, councillors, now we're clear that there's one amendment and the setback is now back to three metres. Is there any objections? I'm going to put it those in favour, those against, declare it carried unanimously for the typist. Page one hundred and thirty three is the next recommendation.
Can we go questions first on this before?
Yes, certainly, Councillor.
Thanks, Mayor.
I, I have, I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councillor.
Just with the R two zoning, I want to know what the range of square metreage for each block could possibly be. So minimums and maximums, like what's the variation?
Through.
Sorry, Tim, to cut you off, but I mean, in general, not only according to this site, but in general, and then what's been applied to this site, please, Tim.
Through the CEO, you're referring to the proposed zoning.
Yes.
Which is seeking a, a minimum density of four hundred and fifty square metres per lot. There is no maximum density specified, but that's the proposed density that's put forward.
And is that average for R two zoning?
It varies, that's, that's a density of around about ten dwellings per hectare. But some densities in that zoning do get up to twice that, I think, of twenty dwellings per hectare.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a few, Mayor, sorry. Thanks, officers that, that quoted us and there was a problem with emails in relation to the response received very late this afternoon. I, I do have a few and if they can be addressed, that would be wonderful and I think you've got most, notice on most of them. Page four seventy five says that this was done in two thousand and fourteen, so first paragraph. So E four, two thousand and fourteen is when it was done. Is it fair to say though that that was based on reports done from two thousand and twelve?
Through the CEO, I can't confirm what sort of reports, with the information in front of me, what sort of reports were relied on with. front of me, what sort of reports were relied on with that rezoning that happened by way of the introduction of the, of the, of the Growth Centres SEP in 2014.
So can you take it from me that they were 2012 reports, being someone from that area? So can you take it from me that they were 2012? So we're pretty much sitting here, looking at something that's, reports that are six, pretty much years old. Next page, 476, in relation to the history, the pre-lodment advice, and the speaker mentioned there, and there's no issue mentioning staff's names, is there, given that they've already been brought up in, nothing adverse, I think?
You, you, you have, who's written the report and who's approved it as a public document, so-
Okay, so the speaker mentioned, sorry, Kieran Wolfe and the advice that they received 12th to the 12th, 2017. Is Kieran the person that first assessed this, or who's Kieran, sorry, I've never-
No, you go.
Through the CEO, Kieran is a strategic planner, who, as it turns out, no longer works at council. Whether he commenced assessment of this, I can ask David to clarify, but I believe he would have, because he was involved, he was certainly a member of our workforce when this application was lodged and, and proceeded to assess it, so I assume he commenced with it.
Through the CEO, yes, that's right, he commenced it, and upon him leaving the employment of council, it was assessed by council's senior strategic planner.
So is it fair to say then that one person had a bit of advice, Kieran, from what I can understand from the speaker, is everything seemed to be going down the right track, based on that planner? And then the planner was changed, obviously, because that person moved on, and then all of a sudden, there's different advice that's then given to a proponent or an applicant?
Through the CEO, I, I don't think it's fair to say that. I think what happens in the assessment of these matters is, you know, we, we sometimes take time to formulate a position with respect to the proposal. I certainly could not confirm or agree that there was a change of position when the assessment officer changed on this.
So then how does one, sorry, then I'll refer to a different planning proposal. In February 2000, this year, we received a recommendation from one officer in relation to Warwick Farm, that said, approve a planning proposal. Council decided to defer it to look at more things, and then I think it was in August, a different officer picked it up, and then there was a recommendation to refuse a planning proposal. So does it sort of change with the person that's assessing it?
Through the CEO, I can only restate what I said before, no, I, I don't believe it does, different, different staff bring different skillsets and different, and different approaches to the work, but we have checks and balances in place that mean that, you know, our position is a consolidated position, and it's positioned based on an assessment of all information and the merit of the proposal.
Sorry, don't think for minutes about this proposal, I'm more concerned about process here, but you just said that, but in February, received one report that said, tick this off, in August, received another report, and the officer had changed, they said, don't, so how's the checks and balances work if in a matter of six months, one report says approve, one says refuse? Just trying to get an understanding of process in planning, and obviously, people spend a lot of money in planning. Why is it that, for example, in that case, and seems like it's happening in this case, from what I can understand, where one staffer was saying, here's my advice, not yes, 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 because a staffer can't, but this is what you need to do, and then another one takes it on and says, no.
Councillor, the matters you're referring to are before Mr Moore's time, so he, he will not be aware of them.
With all respect, though, it's still a process.
I, I-
They were February.
Yes.
And I think Mr Moore was here in February.
All right, my apologies, I thought you, I thought you were alluding to a further matter.
Through, through, through the CEO, I can talk about this proposal if you like, and I can take any-
I'll, I'll keep going then with this one. So then, on page 476, with that advice that's given, there's nothing there that sort of indicates, and yes, it's only advice that they're giving, there's nothing in there that says, go away, you've got no chance, and that's something that I would expect if I was proposing something, advice from a council. There's nothing there that really says, go away, you've got no chance, there's no way this is going to get through. It pretty much says, do some things, that you'd need to lodge a DCP amendment, you'd need to look at the upper canal, you'd need to modify the road layout to comply. I mean, I, I really am concerned about that paragraph in there of the council officers' report, and then I'll go into some more issues.
Through the CEO, happy to address that. The position that was expressed in the initial pre-DA advice, I mean, I will concede, perhaps it, it may not have ruled out the, the proposal straight away, it's very hard to get the balance right on these things at that early stage, before, before the proposal is fully understood. Those, those planning positions are expressed with the benefit of having reviewed a proposal in some detail, but we don't always know our, our, our complete position at that time. So it would have been nice in hindsight to have been perhaps a little more negative, dare I say it, in that, in that preliminary advice with what we know now. However, what has happened along the way has been a rigorous planning process, and I can assure you that there are, there is other correspondence where the council's position, raising significant issues about the lack of strategic merit, the difference of opinion between our experts and the proponents' experts, is very clearly documented. And there were a number of meetings and phone conversations that made clear what council's position was, so they may not have been early enough in the process, but they certainly did happen.
All right, so can you, and I know that you addressed it in a telephone call in the response, but again, the speaker said they preferred to, is it our process that we don't meet with applicants if they request, given they've paid $72,000 for an application?
Through the CEO, no, it's not our process not to meet with people, and indeed, we did meet with people in relation to this, this project. But in this case, there was a lot of information submitted, the council officers formed a position, that position was communicated through correspondence, through phone calls, and ultimately, in a meeting that did happen over the phone, but it was a lengthy meeting, and it was a robust discussion, and the conclusion of the staff at the end of that was, there isn't any new information here that will alter our reading of the merits of this proposal, and therefore, we don't see any benefit in having a further face-to-face meeting. So that was the view formed by the officers at the time, you know, whether, whether that was the right call to make on reflection is a, is something that, that, that I will ponder and discuss with, with the staff, but that was the call that was made, and it was made also on the basis that this was heading off to a meeting of the local planning panel, where, you know, the applicant would have the opportunity to present as well.
In relation to page 482, says rezoning the subject site to increase permissible residential density by more than a factor of four, from a minimum lot size of 2,000 square metres to 450 square metres. My basic calculations are that currently it's approximately 40,000 square metres with a minimum lot size of 2,000, which equals 20 lots. From what I can see in the proposal and reading the report, they're proposing 44 lots. Would that not be a factor of two plus just a little bit, not a factor of four? And I totally understand that this is an indicative layout, but could we not then ensure that that layout is the layout?
Through the CEO, a couple of questions there. Firstly, the, you're right, your mathematics is correct, it depends how you calculate the density, so if you work on a dwellings per hectare density rate, then the density would be, as proposed, a doubling. In other words, from 2,000 lots up to, which is five dwellings per hectare, up to 10 dwellings, dwellings per hectare as proposed. But the, the, the way the officers' report calculates that was some simple mathematics as well to say, well, the average lot size is 450, that's one quarter of the currently allowed 2,000 square metre lot size, roughly, rounding up a little, and that's how that mathematics was done. So I accept that the approach that the officers relied on there doesn't take account of some of the non-yielding portions of the site, and therefore, you know, assumed a fourfold increase, when in actual fact, it's, it's more likely to be a twofold increase. You asked a second question, though, and it's slipped my mind. I have a couple of questions.
Now, hold on, can I finish?
Oh, it's still going, sorry.
Yeah, I've still got a few, and apologies, I thought we'd get that email earlier, but then I went to Plan B, and I may as well go through with Plan B now.
Hold on to your questions councillor Hagerty.
The page 483 says, subject site is further constrained by a fact that it's bisected by easements to high-pressure gas pipelines, running this, that and everything else, and that doesn't reflect good planning priorities. Looking at the report in there across the road, is it not good planning priorities then in all the suburbs down, and I think there's five suburbs along this gas line, that have driveways, roads and everything else that crosses the gas lines?
I can't speak for, do, do you have something to say about that, David?
Through the CEO, in relation to that comment, when, when this report was written, we were in discussions with APA and Gemina Gas in relation to their requirements in relation to the development within proximity to the gas-
Sorry, just, just a sec.
Councillors, could you please go back to your seats, your voices are overtaking the staff, trying to give us an explanation. Thank you. Continue, sorry David.
So during the preparation of this report, and where that was stated was, the, the advice that we had from Gemina, which came in at, at the last minute, was concern about the subdivision layout, the proposed ILP in relation to development in proximity to those pipelines. It is acknowledged that further south within Campbelltown Council through those subdivisions, development has been allowed fairly close to the, the gas easements, but the, the, the most recent information that we're getting, not just in this area, but in Austral, more generally, from Gemina particularly, is broad concern about development in close proximity to the gas pipeline, although those issues generally tend to get sorted out later on in the planning propose, uh, planning process as part of the DA assessment.
So just in relation to that point, though, in the briefing session, I think you mentioned that, is it Gemma, the gas people?
Yes.
At the last minute sent through an approval in relation to this development, so does that mean that they had, there no issues with what's written here?
So, so what, what happened was, we received advice, formal advice from Gemina, that said they didn't support the proposal. We got that on the Friday prior to the meeting of the LPP on the Monday, we provided that to the proponent and to the local planning panel. Subsequent to that, on the Monday, we received further advice from Gemina, as I understand, following representations from the proponent, and Gemina had reversed their decision in relation to their opposition to that proposal, but, but of course, subject to detailed assessment of it at the DA stage.
So then, given, and sorry to be painful here, should the, our report that came to council, so we can make then an informed decision, should we, has that been mentioned somewhere? I mean, this, this is a council report that we're relying on from council officers to make an informed decision. I've been through this, and I couldn't see, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we're going to make an informed decision, I'd like to make it on, and I'll have a look, and if it's in there, I apologise, but I couldn't find it, but anyway, moving on. Also on page 483, more reasons for not and constraints is the fact that the subject site exposed to the potential for excessive traffic noise. Does that mean that then, all that development we've approved on, I don't know, pick a road, Camden Valley Way, we approved units? Should they not have then been approved, or is that a factor that plays into, are we no longer going to approve anything that's on a main road?
Through the CEO, no, I don't think that's the case, and I think that, you know, the, the final recommendation of the officers here doesn't turn on that point, nevertheless, it was, you know, one of the matters weighed up and therefore reported on, in the report.
Yep, sorry, nearly there councillor Hagerty, I know you're ready to move in. Also in the briefing session, there was a, something that was raised, which was a valid concern, that if we do proceed to R2 zoning, although there's 40-odd lots proposed here under the new housing code, they can then resubdivide, for example, get more lots on there, yep. Is there anything stopping us from, should council choose, keeping it with its current zone, but only changing the minimum lot size, which means then that that housing code will not have the effect? Is there anything in the rules that says that E4, 3, whatever it is now, needs to be 2,000 square metres?
No, I don't believe that's, sorry, through the CEO, I don't believe that is the case, I think you could, and I believe that may have even been suggested along the way, that you could have that alternate zone and a, and a higher density development standard.
Reading the report, from what I understood in it, the applicant wanted that, it was actually council officers that said, no, go to R2. Yep, so it is possible to have an E4 zone with 450 minimum lot size square metres, for example, to ensure that there's no further subdivisions or manor homes and everything else.
Do you want to clarify that, David?
So during the original exhibition of the precinct plan, so when this land was zoned in 2014, the department did just that, they proposed an R2 zone with a 2,000 square metre minimum lot size, we suggested it should revert to E4 with the 2,000 square metre lot size, because we didn't believe that a lot size of 2,000 square metres was appropriate for an R2 zone. There is nothing to stop, for instance, the, the, you know, the control changing, rather than the zone changing, so the, the control changes to 450. The difficulty with that, from a planning perspective, is the, you know, a density at that level would generally be inconsistent with what an E4 zone is trying to do, which is environmental living, so larger houses on, or, or larger blocks in an area, ordinarily at 450, between 3 and 450 square metres, tends to be in the realm of an R2 zone.
But is there anything, sorry, the question, is it permissible to have an E4 zone with 450 square metres?
Yeah, it's, it's through the CEO, there's, there's nothing in the legal framework that prevents it, but the point David's making is, it might create some sorts of inconsistencies with perhaps the, the zone objectives for that, for that environmental living zone, and, you know, have consequences therefore, but there's nothing in the, in the legal framework that prevents it.
Is it fair to say, though, that maybe it was environmental because of all the trees, but given the road widening, we've lost most of those trees anyway? I mean, when you go environmental living, you're looking at trees and the landscape and everything else, given that 40-odd trees are being demolished anyway because of a road widening, does that take away then from that environmental living?
Councillor, I think it's a bit more complex than that, this is a, a piece of land that's connected to other low-density housing, it is, it has higher density housing on other sides, but it, but it is connected to that other lower-density housing, it does have ecological characteristics and other sort of natural features that I think were the main influences of the, of the zone and remain relevant to the, to the zoning.
All right, on page 490, down the bottom, the SEP Sydney Region Growth Centres 2006, and the comments, I'll take it from the council staffer or the officer, the proposal indicates consistency with the SEP based on the fact that it will facilitate, and correct me if I'm wrong, if this is not from the planning officer, the proposal indicates consistency with the SEP based on the fact that it would facilitate housing supply consistent with the broad SEP objectives. However, there are nine aims of this policy, council staff assessment indicates the proposal will not be consistent with the, and then it goes to point E, so out of the nine, we found point E. And I suppose this is all a build-up then, as to why this proposal, so there's nine, according to this report, there's nine aims of that policy, and it's not consistent with one.
Two, two councillor.
Well, it's A and then point one of A, or E and point one of E, so I'd take that, okay, one and a half, let's be friends here.
We nearly finished councillor?
Uh, not yet, but if I had, let's face it-
I think you've had a quite a lot of-
Yeah, but mayor, it's, it's-
Just hold your horses, let's have someone else has a turn and you can take a breath. Councillor Hagerty, you can come back to-
I just asked a question.
Yeah, councillor, I'll ask the answer then before we proceed. Yeah, councillor, I'll ask the answer then before we proceed.
Thanks.
Uh, councillor Hadee, uh, the, the question you're.
Wh- wh- where I'm.
Sorry, what is your question?
All right, there's, there's nine aims of that poli-, and this is a build up to why there's probably no strategic merit based on the state government plans. And we're building up the story as to why the council officers won't support it. But if you can meet eight out of nine objectives, isn't that sort of a tick in a planning proposal or any DA? If you, if you get a DA that meets nine out of 10 things, generally, council, you've approved them.
Councillor, I think, I think all, all I can say again is that it is a bit more complex than that. This is actually dealing not with so much the strategic merit test, but more to do with the site specific merits, which as, uh, is explained in the report. Uh, considerations that you make only after you've satisfied, uh, yourself that the site demonstrates it has strategic merit and is worthy of zoning. So, uh, e- even, you know, really it would only take one of those things, I think, to still have a strong case perhaps to, to not support it. There are two, and in any event, they are matters that are considered, um, a- as a sort of, if I can say it, secondary, secondary consideration to the higher level strategic merit considerations.
Two more.
No, stop. Councillor Hagerty, your turn for a little while. Just regroup councillor. Yes councillor Hagerty?
Take a breath. Um, the first question is a, a general question. Um, if a strategy changes, does that mean that the street, the strategic merit of a development might change? So regardless of whether who the assessing officer is, if the overarching strategic document changes in the interim, let's say between February and, and August, if the strategy changes, would the strategic merit of a development potentially change?
Yeah, through the CEO, a- and you're referring to the other example that, um.
Just a general question.
Yeah, 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 yes, yeah.
Thank you. No, that was the first one. I've got, uh, 32 other, no, just joking. Um, the other one was just in relation to this particular, uh, what, what we've got before us, there's a recommendation in the book. Um, do we necessarily have to, uh, put forth our support or otherwise for this development? So I guess, do we need a point one there? That we do or do not support?
A point of order, Madam Mayor.
Yes councillor.
We are on a zoning issue here. I don't think councillors are allowed to have, um, you know, be discussing a development proposal. Am I wrong?
Uh, but yes, technically you are wrong councillor. What, what you're thinking about is development applications.
A development application.
This is a planning proposal.
And that's what we should be discussing, the zoning of, of.
Thank you councillor, I determined the point of order.
Can I, can I also answer councillor Hagerty's question, which is, well, technically you could just have point two, which does not forward this to the Department of Planning and Environment for a gateway determination.
Or alternatively does forward it to.
The only thing I'd add to that is, in doing that, it is good to express to the Department of Planning what the council's position is in respect of the proposal. So that's the reason for having point one there to say to the Department of Planning.
This is the reason why.
Or do not support.
Councillor Hagerty, did you have any other questions?
Uh, so, uh, that goes both ways. So we could say forward it to the gateway and not put in a whether we support it or not. Is that also possible? Same answer?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Rhodes, did you wish to speak? We don't have a mover or a seconder at this point. I think we'll have to ask for one very soon. Yes, I'll get back to you councillor.
That light's still on, that's probably why I can't get in.
Okay. She's blinking.
Sorry, I didn't realise my microphone was on the whole time.
I'm on now, Madam Mayor.
You definitely are.
Thank you.
Go on, go on.
Just for clarification, I know that there is a development proposal or a DA that's being discussed here on its merits. Is that not correct?
What, what is being discussed here is the planning proposal which changes the zoning of the land.
That we're being asked to make a decision about the zoning.
Absolutely, that's your job as councillor.
That's it.
That is correct councillor.
Well, I don't know why we're discussing things in such detail. It seems like you're trying to make us say that we're either in support or not support.
Well councillor, the questions are being asked. There's, nobody's put a motion forward as yet, can I point out? But councillor Chitty and councillor Hagerty have both been asking questions about the proposal in general. Councillor Haddid, do you want to, um, speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Madam Mayor, it seems to me we still have too many questions need to be answered. And there is too many, uh, different professional views in this regard. From my point of view, what I would like to see, that council refer the proposal to result 3153, 35 Denham Court, Denham Court to the Department of Planning for determination, as simple as that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, in light of, um, the answers to those questions, I just have another question.
Well, I was going to ask councillor Chitty to finish his point. Okay, councillor, go ahead.
Um, I just want to know, can council put limitations on a proposal, um, before it's sent to gateway? Or can gateway overrule council and? Yeah. So what you're saying is we can't put a limitation? Or an expectation, for example? Okay, for example, I don't think that 450 square metres belongs in Denham Court. Um, I mean, I'd be happy if it was more, but 450 square metres doesn't belong there. People are paying a premium to live there. It's the Hollywood Hills of Liverpool. If we don't look after it, who's going to look after it? It's just the Hollywood Hills without the roads and the shopping.
Councillor, would you like to move what's in the book?
No, Madam Mayor, I need an answer to that question.
So, so, so councillor, I think I can pick this up. So the, the E4 environmental living basically does what, what you're describing, which is why the zoning is the way it is and why it was determined at that period of time. Um, as, as Mr Moore said before and Mrs Smith backed him in, um, you can in the E4 environmental living have a smaller lot size than the 2,000 metres that's currently there. That is permissible. However, it is inconsistent with the intention of that particular zoning.
Madam Mayor.
Yes councillor Hallam?
In order to move this on, I move the motion in the book.
Thank you councillor.
I second it.
Thank you councillor Rhodes. I think we've had a lot of questions and a lot of queries. I think everybody's fully briefed. I'm going to put, councillor Chitty, you want to finish asking your question?
You promised you'd come back to me, Mayor.
I did, and then you declined, didn't you?
No, no, just to give someone else a go.
Oh, okay, yes councillor Chitty.
Page 492. Says that there's not adequate, or is there adequate public infrastructure for the planning proposal? Yet on page 503 states that there's a report from, uh, I think it's Hill PDA. And then on page 513, there's a recommendation that states all is good in relation to, sorry, this, sorry. Has the planning proposal adequately addressed any social and economic effects? Are we saying then that the report proposed, or sorry, provided by the applicant was pretty much no good?
Through the CEO, no, I don't think we are saying that the report submitted is no good. Um, however, we, I mean, as it's made clear, I think through this report. We, our, our primary consideration was, does it meet the strategic merit test? Our view is, our view was that it did not. Um, and then we considered all of the other materials submitted and did do some assessment of the site specific merits. Uh, but we gave less weight to those things because fundamentally we hadn't passed that first threshold test. So no, I don't think the report is saying that the Hill PDA report is, is, is not good, um, at all.
All right, so then, almost there. How does one then, we, we've got a, an in the memo from yourself this afternoon, thank you for that. Um, says it's pretty much a council officer's opinion. We also then have, uh, reports where I think a well respected person by the name of Sam Haddad, um, has put his name to a report. And if you go through the report, um, when you look at page 546, 545, 543, 544, 542, 541, 549, 550, where you get yes, 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 yes. Um, that's also backed up by, I think it would be Mr Forrest that spoke today, if I take FGCS's himself. So you have, um, not saying our council officers aren't specialists, but, uh, former DG of planning and Mr Forrest that come up with all yeses. With all respect, a council offer that says pretty much no, we're talking about state government plans. Should we allow the state government then to work out if this meets the strategic test or should we be making the call? And obviously it's a decision for council. But how does one say, does one just then disregard all these reports that say this does meet strategic or does have strategic merit?
Councillor, what, what you have in front of you is, is the council officer's recommendation noting this is also gone to the planning panel and you have their recommendation in front of you as well. But as you, as you articulated accurately, this is a matter now for council to determine.
Right, can I ask the?
I move that we, uh.
Can I ask the first mover?
Vote.
Hold on a moment, you moved that the mo- motion be put?
The.
Wait a minute, we have two motions, but let me finish. I'll let councillor Chitty finish.
I was going to ask the initial mover of the initial motion that says just send it the way it is. Um, and I'll take the advice here of council officers, um, for a better outcome. If we can send it for them to determine whether it's strategically merits with the state government plans. But to keep it as an E4 zone, which then restricts the density code that comes through later on in the future. So that means that's that there. The open space that's in these maps just says that it's open space. There's no zoning on that open space. So I'd like to see a plan where that open space is actually zoned something, RE1 or RE2. Um, so that we know that that open space is then protected in the future. Cause at the moment it just says it's open space with no zoning. And the third thing that I'd like to see is if there's 40 odd lots here that they're mentioning, I'm not sure how we do this. But ensure that it's only, I know that the minimum lot size will be 450, which means they can then change it and probably try to squeeze more on there. But how do we ensure that the 44 odd lots are still the 44 odd lots when a DA subdivision comes through?
Well councillor, before I let Mr Moore answer that, I'm just going to clarify something. We have two motions on the floor at the moment without yours that has just come through. And the one is, motion in the book, excuse me. And the second one is moved by councillor Didd and it's that council refer the proposal zoning of 315 to 350, 35 Denham Court Road, Denham Court to the Department of Planning. Do you have a second to for that councillor?
Mayor.
To gateway, all right.
Just, just in relation to that motion, Mayor, I was going to see.
A second up, hold on a minute, second up for that?
I would be happy to second it if he takes on board the comments of an altering his motion, which states that it stays as an E whatever zone. That we amend the plan to show that the RE1 is in there. So it's protected as open, um, green space, whether it's RE1, RE2. And somehow ensure that the 44 lots proposed or this subdivision layout, obviously it may need to change when you do your final reports. But that's all we get. The E4 then protects it from the new density housing code that's going to come in, which can further do development on it. So what we're sending for gateway for them to determine, not for us to determine, for them to determine is an E4 zone with some RE1 and 44 odd lots.
Councillors, um, Mr Ball had, had been told to shush, it's his turn.
Uh, thank you, man.
Just hold on a minute, please councillors.
Through the CEO, the, wha- wha- what you are asking for or need to ask for is for us to revise the planning proposal in that way. Um, the, the Department of Planning can't make a determination on whether are those, whether or not those, that that is the right form for a planning proposal. It must be council's planning proposal that goes to the department. And then the Department of Planning will decide whether or not it issues a gateway determination for that. So I would suggest that if, if you want to go down that route. The, 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 uh, motion should say revise the planning proposal to allow those criteria.
The initial mover then say, uh, revise the planning proposal to, over to you.
Mr Moore, can I just ask you a technicality, just so the councillors are aware of this? If we do revise the planning proposal, my understanding is that it needs to go back to the planning panel for consideration before it comes to council again?
This is, this is uncharted.
Yeah, the, 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 the requirement to go to the planning panel has only just come in board. So we'd have to seek some advice on the procedure there.
I think we would have to.
Madam Mayor.
Yes councillor.
Can I just, we just have a minute just to get our head around the zoning because, um, councillor Hadee is, is very.
Okay, I'm going to call a five minute break. Five minutes councillor. Got two motions, the one that's in the book and this current one that's being written.
Is it too late for some questions?
In the interest of the fact that this motion hasn't been fully written, yes councillor, you can ask a question.
Okay, so, um, is the intention for this to be a transition zone from across the road into sort of your more sort of general Denham Court type vibe? Through the CEO, yes, that's what it does. It's a 2,000 square metre lot size that sits between 450 square metre blocks and I think it's 20,000 square metre further up in Denham Court. Alright, so, I don't know if you can answer this a lot, but in what councillor Haddid slash Hachidi's proposing, the minimum lot size of, pick a number, 450, 600, in your expert opinion, does that, I said you don't have to answer it. Does that, uh, does that still retain that transition? And I'll use this word, this technical word again, vibe?
Through the CEO, councillor, the, the expert opinion to, to look at is the one that's expressed in their report before you and it's saying, don't do that. And so I think it's agreeing with you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes councillor? If councillor Haddid and councillor Hachidi are okay with it, I'd like the, in B, 450 square metres removed. And I'd like to see a minimum lot size of, lot size of 700 square metres, if they're okay with it.
Mover in second are happy with that?
Councillors need to record on the chat.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but the, the two councillors that moved in second would be happy with that amendment.
I might better go with, let's say, 600. Not that we're making our decision based on nothing that we really know what's 450.
700 or 600?
Six hundred would be a happy medium, I suppose, between those two numbers there if it means that's what councillor wants.
Could, could we have a range? Could we have a minimum lot size of 600 square metres to 700 square metres?
We just need one minimum.
Oh yeah, I suppose you're right, yes, sorry, one minimum, that doesn't make sense.
Can I quickly speak for the motion, may I?
Yes councillor, speak to the motion.
In, in relation to this, and it's obviously a tricky one, there's a council officer's report that says it doesn't. But there's also professionals on the other side. And Mr Moore just noted that the professional advice is no, but there's also professional advice that says yes. Based on some issues that were raised in the briefing session in relation to what does an R2 do? Does it then, um, can you further, under the new housing code that's coming out, put more dwellings on there? You can. I think by going to E4 zone, well then that protects that from, um, you know, further having the subdivisions in place. There's also a cap of 44 in there, similar to other areas in our LGA, where we've put a cap on the number of residential lots in the, um, in that particular subdivision. When it comes to advice and when it comes to planning, yes. Put, give this proposal to three people and three people will probably come up with three different answers. We have seen previously, and we've seen in Denham Court, um, previously in the first term of council, where there was a recommendation that said, don't subdivide, I think it was two and a half acres councillor Hall, correct me if I'm wrong. We went against that advice and it went through to Gateway and Gateway then concurred with us in relation to, to that. In relation to housing and everything else, council did approve a planning proposal recently down by the river, which put more hi- more units into that and apparently that had the merit that it had. We, council and I didn't, um, in the mall approved a 90-metre tower because there was more housing, more commercial. While council was undertaking an amendment 52 review, yet some report then comes out and says, well then, you know, maybe we already reached our targets and we shouldn't be, um, having more housing out there. The more housing, the better, the cheaper housing does get. We're seeing Austral at the moment where it's zoned for residential, but unfortunately you can't get the sewer out unless, as someone stated, unless you put it on a train. Because we've got Leppington Station there and you can get the sewer out that way, but you can't get it through a pipe. The more housing we can provide to the community, the more we'll tackle the housing affordability. What has changed in that area, I live and breathe that area, obviously I live out there as well. And the Department of Planning's email that I'm on, nearly every week or second week, there's a new plan, there's a new proposal for that area. They rezoned it not long ago, there was a new plan recently as well, where they're looking now at a priority precinct in that area. So out there, lots of things are happening, lots of things are changing. Brinjelly Road was a two-lane rural road, it's now a six-lane in some parts, with seven traffic lights between Eastwood Road and Camden Valley Way. Something is changing out there all the time. Since this plan was introduced, the announcement of the airport came through, which again meant that things have changed out there. To the left of the site, as we heard from the speaker, to the right of the site, and I think to the other side of the site, three sides of this site, there is this residential density in that area. Stuck between a council officer's opinion, stuck between professionals' opinion. My thoughts are, we support the motion, we send it through to Gateway and we seek their advice. Post-Gateway, they'll obviously have conditions, if they are supportive, if they're not, it's dead and buried. If they do, we then go out to the community and we consult the community on this proposal. Council has another shot at this when it comes back from Gateway, if it does come back. And then we can make an informed decision and work out, was the council officer report consistent with the plans? Or was it the actual applicant's report that were consistent with the plan?
Through the chair, if I may, I just need some clarification. For, uh, B, minimum lot size of 600 square metres, um, could someone please clarify what a floor space ratio of a 600 square metre block would be? I just need my calculator.
It's a matter, it's a separate matter to be determined. I mean typically detached houses on a block of land have a floor space ratio of around about point five to one. But the lot, the lot size itself doesn't determine what the floor space ratio is.
Thank you.
May I, I just need clarification on this. The second motion, the point that was raised before, does that have to go back to the local planning panel? With the second motion, the way it appears now, or is that not required?
Councillor, th- th- this is uncharted, we'd have to seek advice on that. My, my initial reading is that yes, it would have to return to the planning panel.
Which means that effectively we can't carry out the second motion in any event if it has to go back to the local planning panel.
We couldn't carry out section two of that immediately. My understanding is it would go back to the local planning panel, it would then return to council for endorsement to go to Gateway. I, I'm just not sure whether we can circumvent, we'd have to seek advice on that.
Number two can only be valid to the extent that it says, go to the local planning panel first and then see what independent advice comes from the local planning panel before you can go anywhere else with it.
Sorry, just in relation to that, can we add a point three then? Should this be required to go back to the local planning panel? That council do so prior to doing whatever number two says?
Just to clarify, the, wh- whether it does or doesn't go to the local plan, if it does go to the local planning panel, it is just for advice. This is, in the process, this is council's planning proposal, it has to be, uh, under the Environmental Planning and Assessment Act. So I don't see, i- i- if it goes to the planning panel, and I think it would be prudent to do that, it wouldn't mean it would have to come back to council again because we have, i- i- if this is, if this is, uh, if it's resolved in this way, we have a resolution of council, which states what sort of planning proposal council has, has adopted and it would just go to the panel for, for their information.
Supplementary question in relation to that. Shouldn't we at least be considering the advice that might come from the local planning panel? Effectively we're saying, send it off, get the advice, but we're going to go after Gateway in any event, whatever the planning panel says.
Through the CEO, I mean that is the intention, that you consider their advice and that is what you have done tonight.
Okay, question? Yes councillor Hall?
Thank you. On, on the minimum lot size, 600 square metres, and then we're saying there's a maximum dwelling cap of 44. Is it possible that you can actually get 44 if you have a 600 square metre minimum size?
Through the CEO, it may not be, but as, i- i- but, but, but those two things don't conflict because it's expressed as a maximum, uh, you know, dwelling, dwelling cap yield. So if you get less than that, it doesn't matter.
Another question?
Yes councillor?
In that same area, we're looking currently at E4 and RU2. RU2, that's right, rural residential. And they're very similar in terms of block sizes. Most of Denham Court is either two and a half acres or five acres. And the issue councillor Hachidi referred to in our earlier term was, was a five-acre lot, I believe, that was divided into two and a half acre lot and they wanted a battle access and that was the issue. So that's, to me, to personally, that's not the issue. The issue is block size. When we're looking at the transition here, across the road or across the canal, you've got the possibility of having blocks as small as 450 square metres. On the other side of that canal, you now have block sizes, according to what we're saying here, a minimum of 2,000 square metres. And then you've got existing, uh, residential rural living of two and a half acres and five acres. What I'm saying is, and this is probably an argument against this, is that the transition, on one side of the road you've got 450, on the other side of the road we're proposing 600 and then you're going to go from 600 to two and a half acres. That's a big, big step, that's a big transition that I'm totally uncomfortable with and I would think the residents out there would be too.
Councillor, I'm going to take you as speaking against the foreshadowed motion.
Question, may I, if I can? Thanks. On our side of Denham Court though, according to these maps, there is 450 square metres currently. So there is in our LGA. And further to the point, and really I thank you mayor for allowing me to speak, although I haven't asked yet. When you look at these whole areas and you look at Kelvin Park, for example. Kelvin Park was always protected and I know-
You're speaking, you're in debate councillor, will you take the opportunity to speak for your foreshadowed motion now, please? Okay, um, I'm going to put the motion as moved by councillor Hall and seconded by councillor Rhodes, which is the, it's in the book. Those in favour, please raise your hands. The motion becomes the, um, motion and the foreshadowed motion fails. Thank you. Moving on. So that, do you wish to, you need to have your names recorded for that? So did the person get it? Do you want to do it again? Those in favour of the motion in book, please raise your hands. Those against? Okay, thank you guys. Moving on, the next item is on page 138.
Move the motion, may I?
I raised a foreshadowed motion.
Hold on, we got councillor Haggerty, was that you moving the motion? Thank you very much, yes councillor Haggerty.
Actually madam Mayor, can I move an amendment on that one?
Just hold on a moment, councillor Haggerty, were you ready?
As per the Bork.
Yep.
But with a, one addition.
Yep.
Which I need to pull up. That, uh, council adopt a more flexible meeting schedule that allows for meetings both during and after normal business hours. I explain, I'll explain why.
You got a seconda? Councillor Caliander? Thank you councillor, explain why.
We passed that in September 2018 in regards to the committee reps. But it didn't include the briefings. So it's just to make this motion consistent with the previous motion we passed in regards to the committees back in September. Just tidying things up, keeping them consistent.
Happy to take that as part of my-
Thank you councillor Chitty, thank you. Councillor Sheldon, are you happy with that?
Yes, of course, thank you.
Thank you very much, are you happy to proceed that?
I'm happy to generally donate that, uh, to my, to my colleagues across the chamber here.
Councillor, you were going to put amendments?
Excuse me, yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, could we have the policy changed so that when the council does go away, it's from a Friday evening through to a Sunday night rather than a Monday? Because for families or people with young kids who attend school, it's quite difficult. I for one wouldn't want to not send my kids to school on the Monday, but if it's from Friday afternoon, I could pick them up and then attend and stay for the weekend.
It's a matter for council?
You know, I mean only out of school holidays, school holidays doesn't matter when you have it. But if it's during a school term, I'd prefer if it was on a Friday, so-
The movers in second are happy to adopt that into their, into that council briefing, that it be Friday to Sunday if there's, um...
Are we talking about this weekend coming up?
No, no, we're not talking about this particular weekend, we're just talking about generally the policy.
May, instead of, and I won't take it on board, but I'm sure the council officers are taking it on board and it's probably something to factor in, instead of putting it in Hartstone, could change, things may work. I mean, with, in relation to this one, I think we were advised six months ago that that's when it was and I don't think anyone raised an issue.
Yeah, I'm, I mean for future ones.
Yeah, yeah, council officers I think have always been, uh, pretty flexible with when things are held, instead of having it in there.
I'm, I'm, I'm absolutely happy to, to take that as, as a, as a point from councillors. Um, I'm, the reason I'm hesitating- The reason I'm hesitating is because the councillor briefing procedure as it currently stands is completely silent on that matter around councillor workshops. So while I'm happy to take it on notice, I'll need to adopt it into the briefing procedure should councillors wish me to. I'm just, I agree with councillor Haggerty, I'd like to be able to think about the language we put that rather than be prescriptive.
Well, does my amendment deal? Look, I think my amendment covers what you're actually asking, that we're actually a bit more flexible.
Yeah, she just asked for flexibility over the meeting times. So we can take on board people's availability. So you're not always going to get everybody, unfortunately. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, councillor.
Page 144, 11.4. The presentations and information is distributed at councillor briefings. Could, would it be possible for that they be available on the internet prior to the weekend before the meeting? So that councillors have adequate time to fully digest what is in those documents?
Councillor, we can do our best, but often we are preparing the work right up to the wire. Due to, we don't want to delay things coming to councillor briefings or to councillor meetings, but I can certainly try and as best we can get things to use earlier rather than later. But if I, if I had that as a steadfast, unmovable clause, then you would probably be looking at delaying things over a period of time.
A second thing, section 12 about the teleconferencing. The matters that are discussed in the briefing sessions, are they confidential?
Not always councillor, when they are, I'll flag them to you as confidential.
And then are they still open for teleconferencing, even if they are confidential?
Yes councillor, you can see in section 8.4 that councillors may, on a number of occasions each year, participate via teleconference. However, because that's an uncontrolled environment, so, you know, I'm, I'm not aware who's sitting in the room with you while you're teleconferencing. We do ask councillors to sign the confidentiality clause if they are undertaking that, but certainly they can still sit in confidential meetings. I just need to make sure that I manage that. If you're in the room, I can see exactly who's in the room.
So you can see who's in the room of the person who's on the other end of the teleconference?
I can see who's directly in front of the camera. I can't see the potential, maybe 50 people you've got behind you. And I'm certainly not saying that councillors will do that, but we do have procedures put in place that protect you as well if any information does end up leaked out.
And is there any policy? What if all the councillors said, look, you know, I don't want to have to go in there? I can't, why can't I ring in?
Well councillor, councillor, I'll draw your attention to clause 8.4, which says that in certain circumstances councillors may participate via electronic means. And then clause 12.1, which I think is the one that is pertinent, which says it's recognised that information and technology is in a constant state of change. It reshapes the way we interact, communicate and deliver services. However, this needs to be balanced with the need to maintain human relationships through physical proximity and preserving confidentiality and integrity of information being exchanged. So councillors, by adopting this procedure, are essentially adopting the fact that while there are occasions when people need to dial in, and a number of councillors have done that, it is better practice, and you all agree, by adopting this procedure, that it is better practice to be physically present in the room with each other and with senior staff.
But every councillor might have a perfectly legitimate reason not to be there.
Certainly, every councillor may have that. If that occurred, if every, if no councillors were able to be in the room, I would reschedule the councillor briefing session.
You need three. Okay, councillor Hagerty?
So I'll, on a similar angle that councillor Rhodes was prosecuting there. 13.5, how often can a councillor participate remotely? Councillors will only be authorised to participate remotely up to three times per annum. I hit my three, I think, this year, and not because I couldn't be bothered, but because I was physically in another jurisdiction, I was in Canberra. So I get the intention of this particular clause. However, I was being disadvantaged through my diligence in wanting to be informed. There are other people that were actually in Sydney that could, that for whatever reason didn't go. Yet here I was, in Canberra, making an effort to go, but I was only allowed to go three times. So I'm being unfairly punished for my hard work and effort. So I'm not sure how to fix this one, though, because I do get the, the gist of it. Is there some discretion for the CEO there? The only issue I have with that is that it then puts you in a bit of a bind.
There, there is at present no discretion for the CEO. However, you could after per annum put comma or as the discretion of the CEO. I, I think I'm able to manage that relatively responsibly and to negotiate with other councillors if they do have a concern. Noting, of course, that adopting this procedure, you are adopting 12.1, which says that best practice is to be in the room with each other.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, what would happen if we all ended up with jobs that took us out of the? You know, you've got to have a policy and procedure that is stable, that councillors take on.
You're speaking for the motion, I gather, councillor?
Well, I'm just speaking in regards to councillor Hagerty's.
No, you're speaking either for or against the motion, councillor. You don't, you don't comment on another councillor, that's not how it works.
Wasn't on commenting, commenting on another councillor, Madam Mayor. It was commenting on his dilemma and the reason why council needs policies and procedures and should stick to them.
Nice save, thank you councillor. Okay. Yes councillor Caliander?
I just have a question. So following on from the previous, previous questions regarding teleconferencing in case of confidential, confidential information, is there anything precluding us from not making teleconferencing available when there is confidential information that is being discussed? Because of that inability to, I guess.
Screen.
You know, screen and also have an understanding of what the, the circumstances that that information is being revealed in are?
Councillor, certainly, you can, you can put that clause in. I, I would argue, though, that 8.4 and the requirement of councillors to sign confidentiality agreements binds you in the same way you are bound by code of conduct provisions. Certainly, you could put in the clause that confidential matters will not be discussed over electronic means. However, I, I would like to believe, and I have confidence in the fact that all councillors understand that when you've signed something as confidential, it's confidential.
Okay, I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item is page 151.
Move that way, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor.
Just one question.
Hold on, seconder? Seconded in many places, yes councillor, what is your question?
Just one question. Why does it cost us $2,000 for six complaints and $2,000 for two complaints?
Councillor, each complaint is dealt with in a different matter depending on the nature of the complaint. Some matters are dealt with internally, I will rule on those. Others will need, require external investigation, so the costs are not fixed complaint to complaint.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Hagerty?
I'd just like to speak in favour of this motion. One, because I asked for this report last month, yes.
You did.
So a couple of things I'd like to commend. One, the speediness with which this has come back to council. Two, the efficient manner in which our ombudsman has dealt with these complaints, both in terms of money and obviously time. And can I also commend my fellow councillors? Have a look at the, have a look at the number of complaints there. They've, they've gone down considerably over the, the period. I'd like to commend my fellow councillors for being well behaved, hardworking members of the community, and saving ratepayers money there too. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Any other discussion? I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried, thank you. The next item's on page 153.
Move that way, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor.
Second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor, councillor Caliander. I've got a tongue tied there, sorry. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item's on page 157.
Move that way, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Seconded.
Councillor Sheldon?
Mayor, just a couple of questions on notice, if that's okay.
Yes councillor.
And following on from the briefing session, Vish. Can we, can I please get the, what was projected as interest income for the 12 months? And then how we come up with that number that will only get to 200 odd K as presented in the forecasts? I think it's part from the briefing session. Currently, if my numbers add up, we're probably sitting at about 1.2 odd million higher. So far in four months, yet year forecast, we're only saying will be 200,000 higher. That tells me that we're going to lose a lot of money somewhere.
Well, Miss, I'll ask Mr Nodden to answer, but the reality is we're higher regardless. But Mr Nodden, could you please answer that?
Sorry, just before you do, just in relation to that, I, we are higher. But in the budget briefing session, the end of year forecast would only be $200,000. We're currently sitting at about 1.2 already. Means we're going to lose a million dollars based on these numbers. And if I'm wrong, tell me.
Mr Nodden, I'll let you answer that.
Through the CEO. Yes, the year-to-date variation for, between actual and budget is 617, as for the investment report. But I'll go into a little bit detail. The, the basis of how we estimated the budget was on, on average of cash holdings on a month-to-month basis. Now, we have a very ambitious year this year in terms of pure cash outlays. We have budgeted for $165 million of capital expenditure. Now, year-to-date, we've only spent $30 million. There is $135 million balance to be spent in the rest of, say, another eight months. So as we, as we keep spending, as we ramp up our capital expenditure, the cash holdings will go down. So that means that the interest that we're going to, that we're going to gain will reduce. That answers your question?
Okay.
I just have one question.
Yes councillor Rhodes?
Okay, the question is on page 175, seventh item down. Just the.
We're not up to that one yet councillor.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item's on page 166, and I think that's your cue councillor Rhodes.
Yeah, just, just one question. Page 175, the seventh item down, the forfeited development bonds of 82,965. Now, this may have been explained in the briefing message, briefing. Page 175. Seventh item down from the top.
One minute, sorry.
City and infrastructure and environment. It's forfeited development bonds to fund roadworks.
Yep.
Can you just explain what that is? You, you may have explained it in the briefing meeting, but I just, for some reason it escapes me as to what it exactly is.
Okay, so this is the engineering bonds that council receives and, and holds. And if there is any issues in terms of what the developer has delivered as promised. If not, if they don't deliver, then the bond is forfeited and council actually does the work. It's like a security deposit bond, if you like.
So that's work that the developer was supposed to do and didn't do, and then council has to turn around and do it?
Yes, but we hold bonds councillor, to, to do the work. So if they don't do the work, we hold a bond that is estimated to the cost of the works. So what you're seeing in this particular example is a developer who hasn't done the work. So we've released the bonds into our funds to enable us to undertake that work.
Thank you very much.
Can we have a move, a seconder, please, for this motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you Caliander and councillor Rhodes, yes councillor Hagerty?
Just a question. If councillors have questions between the briefing and the council meeting, is it okay to send those through to council staff in the?
I actively seek those out councillor.
Okay, any further discussion?
Sorry, Mayor.
Hold on a moment, yes councillor?
It's if councillor Hagerty has not asked a question all night. He's sat there and sent them all through previously, and now he's having a crack at other councillors.
Councillor?
With point of order, I was not having a crack at it, I was, I was asking some questions about the procedure.
Stop, stop, stop. Point of order is upheld, he wasn't pointing out anybody in particular. He asked a question for clarification and he received it. Councillor Chitty? Thank you. Now councillor Sheldon?
Yeah, the question was, do we have a register of bonds? I seem to remember talking about that in the past. Take it on notice if you have to.
No, I don't need to take that one on notice. Yes, we do have a register of bonds and we did quite an aggressive clearing of it in the last financial year and are continuing to tidy it up.
And that includes lease bonds?
Lease bonds.
I have to take that on notice, I'm aware it's a, I'm aware we capture the developer bonds, but I, I believe so. But let me take that on notice for you councillor.
Thank you.
Right, I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item's on page 192.
Move that way, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Sheldon.
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Chitty. I'm going to put it, any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item's on page 201, committee reports, page 202.
I'll move that way.
Seconded, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Sorry. You can move them as a whole if you wish councillor.
I have to leave a number of, I have to leave one of these.
These are committees?
Yeah, committee five I've got to leave, I've declared a, an interest.
Which? No, it wasn't, comf?
I've got three tonight, I've got a hat-trick. Three, you can do committee one, two, three, four as a whole, and then I'll leave for five.
Okay, so.
Happy to move that.
Thank you councillor Rhodes, councillor Caliander. All of those committees to be moved as a whole, with the exception of committee three. Those in favour?
Five.
Those, sorry, five. Those in favour, those against, declare it carried.
Mark Mayor is being against, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Hold on a moment councillor Sheldon, councillor, you're leaving the room? He's leaving the room. Wait a moment councillor Sheldon.
Councillor, you need to actually leave the room.
No, he, he just has to be not seen.
He just has to be not seen.
He can't, he can't be seen, so he can't intimidate anybody. He's behind the black curtain. Councillor Sheldon, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I just said, Mark Mayor is being against those committees.
Okay, thank you. Fine, now I'm going to put the committee three, somebody move the recommendation? Thank you councillor.
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Caliander. Any discussion? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item is committee five. Back you go. No, I just did three, I'm doing five now. Now, so I'm moving five, someone like to move five?
I'll move that way.
Thank you guys. And I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried, and come back now. All right, next item is on. Page 244, I believe, yes. Question without notice, councillor Ayard?
Yeah, so with this one through the chair, thank you for the responses to the questions, but I noticed that there wasn't an actual policy attached. So is there an actual policy with regard to easements? Do we have an actual policy in place, set in stone?
Mr Moore? Is there an actual policy in regard to easements?
Set in stone.
No, yeah.
So it's practice rather than policy that, that's alluded to here.
Okay, through the chair, if I may. Do you think it would be appropriate that council implemented a policy?
Through the CEO, I don't think it's necessary. I think the practice we've got in place here, which is, you know, draws on the full weight of the law. The Environmental Planning Assessment Act that allows us to use deferred commencement consents is sufficient to, to get the outcomes we, you know, we need to get for people when they need to drain water across other people's land. So no, I don't, I don't believe we need one, this is a practice, it's pretty well established and it works well.
Thank you. So my understanding through the chair, if I may, is that it doesn't work extremely well. So where do I hear people having a lot of trouble? So would it be okay if council staff could draft up some kind of policy?
So you are asking to codify practice into policy?
Yeah.
Certainly so, and councillors can.
So, you know, outlining basically what needs to happen and the steps involved. So including the answers to these questions, but actually have a policy in place. Because I for one, when people ask me about easements at my children's school at pick-up time, have no idea.
Certainly councillor, if, if councillors would like, like this codified, that's, that's something we can do.
So the motion is being moved by councillor Ayad, is that council create a policy regarding easements? Is that it?
Thank you.
Seconder? Thank you councillor Didd. Any discussion or any opposition? Put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item's in the name of councillor Ayad.
Thank you for that, Madam Mayor. To be honest, I wasn't completely satisfied with the answer I received here, but I think it's because of my wording in the question, so I will look into that, thank you.
Thank you councillor. Thank you, councillor. Next item is in the name of councillor Hagerty.
I eagerly await the answers.
Okey-dokey. And the next one's in your name as well.
I also eagerly await the answers.
Okey-dokey. Uh, councillor Hall, you're waiting too, if what looks at it?
Actually, I did get some answers.
Okay.
Verbally, but I have a question.
Yep.
Uh, to the CEO. We talked about the noise issue.
Yeah.
That's what this is about at Black Masket Park. At the time at the briefing session use, I think you said that there is still security, uh, there's a contract for security people looking at that on a regular basis?
Uh, yes, you're correct councillor, um, however, it's clearly not effective at this point in time, and I, as we discussed at the briefing, I need to look into that more closely. I'm as aware of you as the Black Masket, there's been ongoing conversation you and I've had for nearly seven years now. Um, so while we do have security in place, we're clearly not adequately using them to manage the issue, and I'll come back to you in this, um, answer.
I think the CEO is saying we need to look at a strategy that actually works and made it to people from doing what they're doing.
So that the point is, the, uh, the current security people who are looking at that may not be doing the job that they should be doing, is that what you're saying?
Uh, look, I, I, I'd be reluctant to, to say that in an open forum of council, councillor. Um, what I, what I will say is that clearly the residents are still expressing concern, so I need to look at the scope of works that we've detailed, um, regarding Black Masket Park. Um, you'll be aware councillor, it is one of the areas that, um, we've been discussing for a long period of time. At the council workshop, I would like, if time permits, to discuss chipping Norton Lakes with, um, the councillors, because there needs to be some design elements to help manage this situation, as well as the stopgap of security, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the LEP review on page 251, and in the name of councillor Hagerty and councillor Caliander.
I will move that way.
And seconded by councillor Caliander, I gather.
Can I? That is correct.
Hold on a moment. Councillor Hagerty, did you want to talk to your motion?
Um, yeah, look, I just note that we haven't been sent an agenda yet for, uh, this weekend's LEP review. Uh, councillor Cali- Caliander and I have been out, uh, engaging with the community, taking phone calls, emails, going to, uh, numerous meetings, and, uh, these are basically the five things that come up quite a bit, they're very consistent. Um, amenity, uh, especially out, uh, east of the river, uh, essentially, and we sort of had a bit of debate about that in regards to the previous item with boarding houses. Um, people who have lived in their neighbourhoods for 50, 60 years, it's your sort of classic, uh, you know, three-bedroom house with a big backyard, there's a whole neighbourhood of them, they're tiny streets, they don't support very large apartment buildings going on there, or, you know, multi-level apartment complexes, um, they want to retain the amenity of their neighbourhood. Notification, again, this is something that we've gone over and over again, when and how people should be notified, um, about, uh, you know, a development application or any other kind of, kind of development, um, in their neighbourhood or beyond. Privacy, um, there have been a couple of issues that I am aware of, where, uh, you know, within the existing LEP, uh, house in, house in a backyard's been knocked down, a house over the backyard of a person's house has been knocked down, they've put up, you know, two, um, townhouses, and what was once their private domain, that is their backyard, uh, they've now got effectively people peering down on top of them. So, um, a person's backyard is their private domain, it's that area where you can get a bit of free time out in the sun, um, a lot of people are loo- losing that, they'd like it maintained. Um, transparency, there's a view that, you know, once things go into the planning process, there's no idea of how, when, what comes next, so a bit more transparency around that. Um, and just around social impact, uh, when and where we should conduct comprehensive social impact assessments. We've made change to this, uh, in this term of council, I think we need to look at that again.
Thank you, councillor, uh, Rhodes?
Yeah, just, uh, if the, um, if the councillor will consider, uh, the council incorporate the following issues, but other councillors have got other things to say to that as well, so we don't want just these things to be a part of it. One, one important thing is, uh, the infrastructure in the areas that, um, these sorts of developments are happening, like the services and stuff like that. Um, I don't, you've got amenity, but, um, there is a lot of discussion around that. So in, can we just put in there that, yes, these things, but not excluded to these things, to open it up so that we can?
Yeah, look, I'm, by no means am I saying this is the agenda for the weekend, I'm saying that this be considered as part of the agenda. Um, by all ma-, by all means, as long as it's, you know-
Following, the following issues, but not limited to.
It's not an exclusive list.
No, yeah, the following issues, but not limited to, something along those words.
Thank you, um, any other speakers?
I mean, just, I want to congratulate councillor Hagerty for doing his job and consulting with the community, I thought that's what the role of a councillor was.
Well, not all councillors apparently, but.
Uh, no.
I withdraw, I withdraw.
Thank you.
In, in relation to some of these things though, and to ensure that we get it right, things like notification, isn't that a DCP issue that we could address pretty much straight away? Um, and a few of the other things, uh, the social impact is something we can do straight away, if it's, if they are important things, I don't think we should be waiting for an LEP review, there's something you can put a motion up for next council meeting, and it can be addressed immediately if you choose to do so, instead of waiting for another year and a half to address it, councillor.
Thank you, councillor. I don't know whether you were speaking for or against, but I'll take it as a middle-of-the-road comment. I'm going to put the, uh, motion, those in favour, those against, the clerk carried unanimously. Next item is on page 254, no, 24?
Uh, 253.
Three, sorry, no, but three.
Yeah, I move the motion.
I'll second it.
The motion's on 25, thank you, councillor Sheldon?
I'll second it.
Thank you, councillor Sheldon moving, and councillor Rhodes seconding. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the clerk carried.
Was that unanimous, madam mayor?
Pardon?
Was that unanimous?
Yes, it was, councillor. If it wasn't, it is now. Uh, the next item's on 257, the re- the recommendation.
Yes, madam mayor. Um, there has been further, and I thank the, uh, CEO for their report back on what council is doing to do this, uh, to address some of the issues that we know, and we're also willing to, uh, accept that we have got this problem, we've got a problem about perception of safety in the Liverpool CBD, but what is alarming me is that there is seems to be a situation where these things are becoming the norm, and people aren't reporting them to, to the police, but there's, they're willing to talk about it to people in general. Um, so I find that alarming, although the statistics might show that our, our crime rates are going down, I don't believe it is the truth. We know that we've had issues even raised here in council, um, from our own institutions like the, uh, the museum, where they're constantly having to clean away needles from the parking area and other such items. But, um, I don't know whether it's actually a survey that we need, or whether we need a point five in this motion that says that the council report back, uh, as to what further action we can do, because although we're doing a lot, we're not winning the war, and we have to do more.
Through the chair, if I may?
Yes, certainly councillor.
Um, in regards to the, um, city activation, the classical music in the mall, I know that this was quite successful with Parramatta, who had similar issues to us, and the issues we have in the CBD, which, um, councillor Rhodes has outlined in her motion. So I was wondering if councillor Rhodes would be open to, um, having this survey done in the mall also, before the classical music begins, and then after the trial?
That's different.
We can do it again, and just see if the results change, if she, we should keep, keep the classical music going.
Happy to support that in the motion, apparently that was something that was done in Parramatta and worked out quite successfully.
Um, we did do a survey, a comprehensive survey in the CBD on these issues in the past, and they went very well, can I say? But, um, I think doing a before and after, the various modes of music would be probably a different way of attacking it, and be very interesting to see the results. Okay, we have councillor Rhodes moving.
Can I speak to the motion?
Yes, go ahead councillor.
You just did. What? Uh, well, I was only, that was the prelude.
Oh, okay, well.
Because over the past year, I have received various reports from Liverpool constituents who have observed drug-related issue in and around the Liverpool CDD, CBD, that is going unreported to the police because it's so prevalent and it's becoming accepted as the norm. A recent council activation in the mall had added another advantage in that there was a constant surveillance by a, um, security officer to actually observe the citizen behaviour, and what they witnessed along with other reports from other areas in the CBD over the ar- last year poses the question that, is it appropriate that Liverpool businesses have to endure inappropriate and threatening behaviour from people who meet regularly in the Liverpool mall whilst they're waiting to receive prescription methadone? Is it appropriate that there are reports from Liverpool business owners, staff and/or customers who have felt unsafe when returning to parking areas and report witnessing people in the process of drug dealings? Is it appropriate that businesses have had to endure drug-infected citizens entering their premises? Is it appropriate for Liverpool businesses to be constantly chasing people from their toilet areas who are in the process of self-injecting? Is it appropriate that businesses have to constantly clean up needles left in service laneways that serve the Liverpool businesses? Is it appropriate that the Liverpool Museum has to clean away needles from their car park on a regular basa- basis? Well, it's a sad fact that all the bu- all the above are just some of the reports that I have received and other councillors have received over the past 12 months. Liverpool council needs to know how drug-related issues are affecting the Liverpool CBD and ask itself, is this appropriate for the image of an innovative health and education precinct, a smart city that proposes to attract more business and become the business hub of Western City? The businesses in the Liverpool CBD are easily contactable eyes and ears of the CBD, who can provide council with information about their experience and observation. Council needs to investigate the growing concern about drug-related socially unacceptable behaviour in our CBD that is not being reported to the police, and report their findings back to council, as I said in the motion, so that we can get over this speed hump and start to progress Liverpool in a way that we can all be proud of.
Can I speak against the motion, mayor?
Go ahead councillor.
Thanks, mayor, we're talking about drugs, needles, everything else, I, uh, thank the councillor for bringing it up, it's an issue that should be dealt by the New South Wales Police Force, I ain't going to send our staff couns- or, uh, rangers in there trying to pick up needles, look at needles, talk to people about needles and everything else, when it's something that we cannot control. There's a few councils here that keep talking about cost shifting, and what are we doing and what aren't we doing? This is a state government issue when it comes to drugs and policing matters. Policing matters should be left with the police officers, probably need to mention that another 1,500, I suppose, were now recruited into, into Galburn, so there is more police out there. What we should be looking at doing is speaking with the local area command, saying, what are you doing to ensure that Liverpool does get more police, because you're saying councillor that we do need more police and there's drug-related problems? Let's focus on getting more police out here, instead of doing more surveys, getting out there, and talking about a problem that apparently you've known about for 12 months.
Just as a comment, madam mayor, the Scott Street Clinic has carried out surveys, very similar to what's been called for here, they've reported the results to those surveys to council's Community Safety Precinct Committee.
Yes.
Which meets every three months, and it's just unfortunate that the work that's already underway and has been underway, there, I think Richard Garbury, the gentleman in particular, uh, over the last several meetings of the council's Community Safety Precinct Committee has not been acknowledged at all.
I have to thank you for that councillor, I don't normally comment, but I have to say that there was a lot of work done, there still is a lot of work being done, and there's a lot of partnerships as well. Um, while I appreciate the frustration that's being expressed tonight, and I think everybody has a view on it, I think we have to be aware that some people get very distressed at the sight of some things that are antisocial, and it is very much a police matter, but I understand the pride councillor Rhodes has in Liverpool. Okay, moving on, then, any other speakers?
Question, madam mayor?
Yes, councillor Hall?
I, um, I take councillor Chitty's point of view. The problem is, if council doesn't clean up the needles that are lying around the place, who does?
I think councillor, councillor was saying that it's a policing matter, not a council matter, so to speak, and it's also a health matter. I remember when a ca- new councillor was elected to this council some years ago, saying that they would make sure that all sorts of things would stop, and they were actually not a council matter, they were a health matter, and they did find that out in the fullness of time, I'm not going to name the person.
Sorry, mayor, in relation, response to councillor Hall, I think-
Yes, certainly.
I'm not saying don't pick up the needles, uh, that is a council matter, absolutely. What we're asking for here is to go out and do a survey, apparently, that's already been done, and we have the stats on there. It's a police matter to monitor the drug-related incidents, let's talk to the police commander, get these results that have been put out there, the surveys that are already done, and lobby for more police. Another 1,500 have been recruited into Galburn or wherever it is that they do what it is. If we need more officers, let's ask for more officers, instead of doing more surveys on results that we already have.
Madam mayor, if I may?
Yes, councillor.
Um, in light of this discussion, would it be suitable for us to write to the state government to ask that the methadone clinic be moved, um, to the hospital, a section in the hospital?
There is a se- there is-
Um, but, I mean, taken out of the mall, out of the CBD, and moved only to the hospital? I think that'd be easier to police, and people in general would feel a lot safer, and then we wouldn't have the issues of people shooting up in public toilets.
Well councillor, can I just say to you that while I appreciate nobody here would, um, support drug use, I would like to make it clear that the chemists and outlets are for people that are in recovery, and they've had to go through certain procedures to get to that point. They are not in the police realm, they're in the health realm, and I think we are not a society that will actually say to someone that's trying their best to get their life back to order, that they should be punished for that. And this programme is a well-trusted programme and a well-researched programme. I have to say, I cannot agree with your sentiments, I have lived here over 60 years, I have seen the changes, I wo- go to the mall on a regular basis, I go to the chemists on a regular basis, I see people in very bad states of affairs and in very good states of affairs. I find it very concerning that we're honing in our group that seems to be unfortunately very visible, but also in the minority. Now, we meet with the police on a regular basis, and they are very cooperative, can I say? And they are very helpful in looking at the issues we face as a council, because this is a very important social issue. So we need those outlets, because these, this is where people get treatment, and it is not just the hospital that does it, it's throughout the suburbs, not just in the mall. You'd be surprised who actually dispenses methadone.
Thank you, madam mayor, I used to dispense methadone myself after high school, at a local pharmacy at Rockdale, and I'm all for rehabilitation. Um, okay, then how do you suggest we get more police patrols out and about?
It's a matter of discussing it, like, what we've done in the past is if there's been an overwhelming issue, such as the museums, a very good example, because it's rather isolated, we could actually ask the police to regularly check the car parks and that space, because it is so isolated, and I'm quite certain they will do that. Um, the reality is though, if people are being badly behaved, they move to other areas to do that behaviour, so it is unfortunate, but that's the nature of the situation. You won't ever eradicate it, sadly to say.
Madam mayor, can I have another look at my motion?
Sure.
Bring it down a bit?
Do you want me to read it out for you, Ken?
No, no, I can see it now, it was out of the screen area. Um, can we put in there, take out, uh, let's just ask if council can provide a security officer in the mall during the daytime of business hours? To see whether this makes a difference to what is happening in that mall?
No, councillor, I have to rule that out of order because of the financial implications, and I'm not being difficult, if you wish that to happen, my suggestion would be to call for a report on the costs of putting a full-time security in the mall to prevent-
Well, let's put that in the motion, madam mayor.
Call for a report on the actual financial implications, I think that would be responsible.
Madam mayor, can I?
It's not only that, it's not only that, I don't believe a security can enforce the law, it hasn't got its authority, he can't do anything, he can't do it.
From the reports, or if, through the CEO, from the reports given when there was a security officer in there, the behaviour was better.
Well, my colleague, you know, I can, I can tell you councillor, the security can ask for identification for anyone, so he can enforce the law. for anyone, so he can enforce the law.
Madam Mayor, can I ask that perhaps a good or better forum to raise this would be the Community Safety Committee, where representatives of the New South Wales Police do it then?
Well, you can move, you can move that this matter with the motion be referred to the Safety Committee. We haven't, actually, at the moment, we haven't got a second.
Can we also refer it to the CBD Committee, wherever that's situated as well?
It's a matter for council, it's a matter for council, so if you wish to put that into your motion, councillor Rhodes, feel free.
Yes, I'll put that in.
Okay, so under call for the report for financial implications, that this motion be referred to the CBD Committee and the Safety Committee?
And the Safety Committee.
All right. So moved by councillor Rhodes and seconded by, thank you councillor Hall, I'm sorry.
I would like to speak against this motion.
Just a question.
Yes, councillor, he did.
Well, what the CBD and Safety Committee can do about it?
I think that's a valid comment, but the motion is what it is. You can speak against it, councillor Haggerty?
Councillor Nathan Haggerty would like to speak against the motion. I'm not saying that Liverpool, the Liverpool CBD has people, you know, parading up and down with flowers in their hair, by no means, but I just can't marry reality with what this motion is projecting. We know that outside of this council, there's a perception, and we see it on Facebook comments and all, there is a perception problem that, you know, Liverpool has, you know, got issues with crime and drug use. I don't think that's a reality, but I'm not saying that it doesn't exist either. I don't think that the perception is reality, and I don't think this motion helps address those perceptions. We've had briefings from the police around crime statistics in the area, they're down year on, year on year. This doesn't help, okay? Our jobs as councillors is to promote the city, probably in the Local Government Act, one of our jobs is to promote this, you know, promote our area. Putting motions up like this doesn't help, you know, it strikes of sensationalism, and I wonder if we're actually trying to solve the problem. If we're trying to solve the problem, we'd put up some decent solutions here. I don't know how giving it to the CBD Committee is going to solve the problem. Giving it to the Crime Prevention Committee will certainly go that way. Couple of other things, methadone, don't you drink methadone, you don't shit it up? I don't know, anyway, moving on.
Fair enough, thank you councillor. Next.
Portugal, in Portugal, they address their drug problem by decriminalising all drug use and treating it as a health issue rather than a criminal justice issue. I'm not saying we do that, we can't do that, we're just a local government, but when you treat drug addiction as a health problem and not a justice issue, you do, the evidence in Portugal is very clear that you do get much better outcomes. However, that means I'm not letting the justice system off the hook. I go with councillor Hiddi's words here, it's not, you know, why are council, why is council doing surveys? If there's a, if there's a, crime's been committed, it's the police's, police's job to patrol the area and arrest people if necessary. You want a security guard. Why are taxpayers' money being put forward to have security guards when there's a police station one block from the mall? There's a very big police station out here that's in the CBD, very well staffed, they should be doing what they've been tasked to do, which is, you know, protecting and serving, as they say. Basically, if the police aren't doing their job, we need to go to the police and say, please do your job. So we don't then go, oh, the police aren't doing their job, let's use taxpayers' money to get a security guard.
Thank you, councillor Hall, did you want to speak to your motion? Yes, the one that's been moved and seconded by yourself and councillor Rhodes. We've just had a speaker against.
In the meantime, can I speak, have a final say for my motion?
You can have your right of reply, and if you want to do that, that ends the debate.
Okay, does councillor Hall want to say anything?
Yes, thank you. You've spoken about the committees, the, one of the, the Safety Committee, I've attended that a number of times, and we talk about the drug problem there, methadone problems within that committee. And the several times that I've been there, we really have not come up with a solution to address the problem. The police themselves have said it's a problem, and they do not have a practical answer to that. Sadly, unless we know how intense the problem is, we really can't address it. So I'm for this, that we get some information, find out how bad the problem is, and then do something about it, and if it's so bad, then we could ask the police to actually do something. At this stage, we probably don't know exactly how bad it is, and therefore I think we should take some steps to find out how that is, and that's what this proposes.
Thank you.
Point of clarification, Madam Mayor, in the previous discussion, wasn't there some talk of such a survey or such information already existing?
Yes, yes, a survey was done previously. Councillor Rhodes, you've got the right of reply.
What just?
Oh, sorry, councillor did.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Madam Mayor, the question is, do we have issues within this video related to methadone cleaning, drugs, robbery, theft, whatever? Yes, we do. But another question is what the council can do about it? Absolutely nothing, but one thing, just to clean the street, clean the road, and this is all. I believe what councillor Rhodes should do, the only things we can do, just, you know, direct the CEO or to like to the state government identifying all these issues and request some sort of assistance to enforce the law. That's all what you can do, it's no more than that.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes, you have the right of reply.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate all that is being done, but from reports, it is not enough. Council does have an obligation to be able to provide the constituents a safe and healthy environment. We are not able, as you put it, to do it. We have to do more, we have to find ways that it can be addressed, but the reason for the survey was because when you ask these people, did you notify the police about this? They say, no. So these particular issues are not being reported to the police, they're not being included in the crime statistics that show that it is going down. It might be wrong. This is hearsay evidence. The only way to confirm it is to do a survey from council, go out there, ask the questions, find out the answers, and then put together a policy or procedure to address the issue as a part of council's responsibility. If a part of that responsibility, if we find that, well, there's a lot of crimes that are not being reported to the police, then we inform the police about them. That's the job of council. So I've asked the councillors for, and this is not promoting something bad in Liverpool as has been suggested, this is all about making Liverpool a better place, and unless we do do that, unless we do do that, we are never going to become the smart city, the innovative city, the health precinct, we're not going to do it. We've got to do something. If councillors can come up with a better suggestion, I'm willing to listen to it, but it is not sufficient to say, oh, this is being handled by the police, this is being handled by the police and Safety Committee, we're doing that now, and it's being reported that we still have a problem. Now, we either accept the situation, investigate it, and then put together something which will help to address the situation further, because what we're currently doing, if these reports are right, is not working.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, question to the CEO, please.
Pardon?
Question, question to the CEO through you.
No, I'm sorry, debate's closed, questions closed.
Okay.
I'm going to put the question, put the motion as moved by council, yes, asked after the meeting. Those in favour of the motion, please raise your hands. Those against? Motion's defeated. Next item is on page 259 and 260, councillor Rhodes.
And here we go again, Madam Mayor. It's beginning to sound like a bit of a broken record, but Liverpool does have a problem, councillor Haggerty, I, point of order?
Yes, councillor, you can be heard without any interruption, continue, councillors.
I ask, I ask for an apology.
What's your point of order, councillor?
The point of order, that councillor Haggerty was making comments which were condescending to my, my.
Presentation.
Yes.
What is the comments that he made? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
He was suggesting that, like he's sick of hearing me talking or whatever, that was the.
Did you do that?
I was merely agreeing with councillor Rhodes when she said, it's starting to sound like a broken record. I said, it is.
Okay, well.
I was agreeing with.
I think that's a bit cheeky.
Look, yeah, if she, if she misunderstood the meaning, I'm happy to withdraw and I apologise, councillor Rhodes.
Good, thank you, moving on, councillor.
Apology accepted.
Sorry, Mayor, just a, in relation, if I may, a point of order in relation to the, to the motion before us, point two, does that require a rescission of a previous motion to be able to have that on the books, given that council did consider, or there was a motion in relation to smoking rooms or smoking zones and previously discussed, which was defeated and dealt with?
The resolution of council in summary says that we will put signage up around zones that are already designated no smoking zones, so around children's playgrounds, public service buildings, et cetera. I don't read this as being inconsistent with that resolution, it would be an additional resolution to the resolution that's already standing on the books.
Thank you, we've got to move, councillor Rhodes, seconded, councillor Hall, and councillor Hiddi, can you turn off your mic? Thank you. Now, continue councillor Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This particular motion is about to clean up our CBD, and we do have a problem. Our CBD is perceived to be dirty and uninviting. The nominee, the norm that I'm putting up is that we implement an educating and public engagement programme, similar to West Rock, doesn't have to be West Rocks, but we know about that one, and we know that it does have results, but we only had, what, two days of education. The second point is investigate and identify possible suitable sites and the cost for the installation of voluntary smoking zones in which people could be encouraged to smoke and dispose of their cigarette butts, which are a big problem, in a socially responsible way. That is what is the motion. The background would be that the latest regional litter programme, and I thank the CEO's information about this, which confirms it, that we did engage in it from the Western Sydney Regional Organisation of Councils, and it did achieve a 46% reduction in cigarettes litter across the key Western Sydney shopping strips. Liverpool itself has got a particular problem in that we're getting 200 new citizens every week. We've got a continuing problem. Our city is unique, it's not like other cities that have a contained.
Sorry, what's the problem, sorry, Mayor, point of order, question to the councillor before I forget it, what's the problem with 200 new citizens coming in every?
I didn't say it was a problem, it's not a problem, it is one of the difficulties that we have, because we've got 200 new people that we may have to educate into keeping our city clean. What, what happens in other cities where they've got a stable population, it's easier to educate them. When we've got 200 new people coming in, we're continually trying to educate them, that was all that, that was about. Bin Your Butts Programme is an ongoing West Rock effort to tackle Western Sydney's 14 million per year litter clean-up bill under the Western Sydney Regional Waste and Resource Recovery Strategy. It was already run between March and September 2008, and this particular, that particular programme, and I'm not saying that we should use this programme, we can find someone else that might be able to do it, can include the installation of cigarette butt bins, which we've spoken about, we've got one that isn't working successfully, we've had a lot of vandalism on those things, they cost $5,000 each to install. It can include voluntary smoking zones, as well as a range of community education and engagement activities. The community education and engagement facilities, activities are things that we have to do on a continuing basis. It is not sufficient for us to do it two weeks or two days in a year and think that we've done the job. Cigarettes may seem small, but they make up, they make up the majority of litter across our region. Each time someone drops a cigarette on the ground, they are diverting resources away from important work like bush regeneration, community centres, public parks and footpaths, as well as polluting our iconic George's River. The Bin Your Butts Programme that previously achieved the 46% reduction gives hope that most people do care about keeping their community clean. Liverpool, although previously engaged through this programme, has an ongoing problem, particularly with cigarette litter, and particularly in the Macquarie Street Mall. We are a unique city with unique challenges, which is what I'm trying to point out to council. Receiving the 200 new citizens every week, combined with our culturally and linguistically diverse community, makes it all the more necessary for an ongoing, continuous commitment through programmes such as these to continually educate and encourage more socially acceptable disposal of litter. Despite all efforts so far, Liverpool CBD litter programme continues, and often the mall and the rest of the CBD appears dirty and uninviting, comparison to the non-smoking commercial centres that service our CBD. To address the Liverpool CBD's continuing perception of uncleanliness, we need to encourage with the continued and continue the education and encouragement that these programmes do deliver. To be able to attract the thousands of shoppers that are shopping in the non-smoking, clean shopping opportunities offered at the northern end of Macquarie Street into the mall and into other businesses in the Liverpool CBD, we have to make the CBD as equally clean and as equally inviting. We need to re-engage in ongoing education programmes in order to address the uncleanliness of the Liverpool CBD.
Mayor, sorry.
Particularly the problem of cigarette butts in order.
Yes.
I'm sick of our CBD getting smashed, unclean, dirty, uninviting, junkies, needles, I mean, Jesus Christ, where does it stop, councillor? Point of order, it's just absolutely not sure what I can say here without getting in trouble. Rubbish is probably a good word right now.
I think, I think your point of order is, councillor, that the councillors are here to promote the city and not to denigrate it, and that councillor seems in her way of trying to protect the council going down the road of basically denigrating council. Is that what you're trying to say, councillor? Councillor?
Yeah.
Thank you. I, I will uphold that, and given that you've only got 12 seconds left before you turn into mush, I think you should end there, councillor.
Okay, Madam Mayor, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
What it is, is not, not speaking about how, trying to put Liverpool down, it's trying to tell council, we have to do something.
Yep.
We have to do something to fix these.
I would like to speak in favour of the motion.
Yes, thank you councillor Haggerty.
Yes.
Speak away.
When you read the motion, it's actually a reasonable motion. We all are on this council for the same reason, and we want a great CBD, we want a vibrant CBD, we want a successful CBD, we also want to use all those same words for the entire LGA, but we're concentrating on the CBD here for some reason. I know that councillor Rhodes is very passionate about the CBD and wants best for the CBD. I think the, the issue we have here is the phraseology, the phrasing. You know, there's a thing called constructive criticism, there's a thing about phrasing things, you know, in a positive manner. You can say, here's what you did wrong, or you say, here's what we can do better next time.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Yes, councillor Hall, councillor Rhodes, sorry.
Is the councillor trying to tell me what I'm supposed to do?
No, he's speaking to the chair councillor.
I'm, I'm speaking to the motion.
Speaking, yes.
And so what I'm saying here is, let's, I've lost my train of thought here, so rather than saying, here's a terrible thing, here's a positive thing we do, so here's a positive thing we can do, we can encourage people to bin their butts, we can encourage people to not smoke, or when they do smoke, smoke in voluntary smoking zones, let's investigate that, there's a positive way to go about it. There's some suggestions that, you know, maybe we're not doing anything or we're not doing enough for the CBD. We just passed a strategy tonight, whose exact name I will look up while I fluff around for a bit, City Activation Strategy, City Activation Strategy. We are doing something, we're activating the city. In four to five years, we'll have a vibrant 18-hour economy, we'll have lots of commercial jobs, we'll have people who live in the city make six-figure We'll have people who live in the city, make six-figure salaries with beautiful white collar shirts on and suits, both men and women. And they'll go to work nine to five with high-paying jobs. After that, they'll go to some beautiful restaurants that'll have hats and all those kinds of designations that make them really popular. There'll be a vibrant cafe scene in the morning, a vibrant restaurant and bar scene. That's how we're going to activate the CBD. And with that, you'll get a culture change. You'll get a culture change where people will bin their butts. You'll get a culture change where people who, you know, maybe the methadone shop will go, "Hey, we don't have many addicts around anymore, let's move to a more appropriate area." Or, you know, we'll have a very positive CBD. So we're doing lots and let's talk in a positive frame of mind about the CBD. This is a great motion.
Thank you councillor.
I'll speak against the motion, Mayor.
Councillor Hachidi?
Thanks. My reading of this motion is a second attack of smokers in Liverpool. Councillors previously, my reading, my reading only. Councillors previously had a motion before council and wanted to ban it across the CBD everywhere. Smokers, I think, were dirty, were some of the comments that were used previously. It was all about the smokers. That didn't get up, so here we go, stage two. If people are serious about and say that there's an issue that big in the CBD or in Liverpool in general, surely it's not just about the butts that are around there. Surely if you're serious about all these issues that you're raising, surely it's about the people and educating them not to throw the plastic and the bottle on the ground. Surely it's about educating people not to spit. Surely councillor Hall, something that you've had been pushing for a very long time, not throwing the chewing gum on the pavours. This is not about smoking and dirtiness. This is just a second attack on smokers in the CBD because you've had, some councillors have had a crack previously, didn't get up. So how do we crack at them again? We put up another motion, we reworded, we make out that we want to do something for the community. My reading, my reading only. There are ashtrays that have been put in by the EPA and Liverpool City Council because it's got both logos on them throughout the CBD that people are using. If it is a problem councillors, support a programme that covers all litter. This is just something to do with smokers. Can I foreshadow a motion, Madam Mayor?
You can foreshadow it now if you wish.
Thank you. That the CEO organise a pens-down, gloves-on, clean-up Liverpool Day, incorporating the whole organisation. Where possible, without affecting services.
Thank you councillor Hagedi.
Would councillor Rhodes be willing to incorporate it?
I am absolutely willing to put that in my motion. Thank you very much councillor.
Thanks for that, but I still want my foreshadowed motion without the other stuff that's in there.
No, I mean, I need to speak.
Okay.
I'm not used to basing generosity down.
Okay, all right.
I need to speak to the relevant union.
Okay. We're just making sure that legally the CEO can, I know she can do anything, but there are people that you have to talk to.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Well, you're very clever.
Okay, so councillor, that particular motion, you're happy to take on board into your motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Second, are you happy? Okay, all right. I think the sentiments and the discussion has been held. I'm not, I'm going to put the motion as moved by councillor Rhodes and seconded by councillor Hall. Those in favour?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, is this with the foreshadowed included?
Yes, included. Numbers, numbers. Declare the motion carried. Okay, the next startum is in the name of councillor Hachidi.
Mayor, I'm going to make it quick, I'll move the motion if I get a second.
Second.
This council has now passed two budgets. Let's face it, we've passed two budgets on the legacy of the previous council. We get a report that says, "This is what we've been doing, we probably..." Sorry, not that simple. "This is what we've been doing, we need an increase, let's do a little bit more with a few projects in there." Councillors, we've done this in the first term, we did this in the second term where everything is off the table. I thank the CEO for her comments in relation to the services. But I think it's timely before the last budget that we pass and then go to an election, so we don't get to see the fruits of that. But we actually have a couple of budgets that this council collectively has put together from scratch. I'd ask your support, if you don't, I'll move on to the next one.
Any speakers against?
I have a question.
Yes councillor.
Is it possible for us to be able to do it in that time?
It would be very, very challenging to do it with any integrity and rigour councillor. We could certainly look at certain areas of the business. There's some areas that are easier to manage zero-based accounting than others. Some of them in fact already, such as children's services, already operate that way. The reason I would like to align it to the service reviews is you don't really know what you're budgeting for until you've fully defined what you want to get out of your service and what your community are looking for. To put it very simply, for example, we don't have strong clarification from the community, for instance, how many times they expect our parks to be mowed. I would like to be able to get that type of information to put into the service review where you then use that information to get your zero-based budgeting. I actually completely agree with councillor Hachidi. If I could get to zero-based budgeting now, I've been asking Vishwa when we can get to it for the last two years, which is why we have initiated the service review process so that we can get the proper rigor around what we're delivering. So I certainly can bring the areas where we have done that work to zero-based budgeting, but to bring the whole organisation to that place, I can do it, but the quality of the work I don't think would be that high, to be honest with you councillor.
I would like to foreshadow a motion.
What is your motion councillor?
That council directs the CEO to come back to council with a list of areas where reasonable to do a zero budget for the 2019-2020 financial year. And also in that report, for the areas you can't do it for 1920, come back with a reasonable timeframe for the rest of council. If you can make that sound better, that would be good, thank you.
Council directs the CEO to create, implement zero budgeting in areas where possible and to bring back to council other areas where zero budgeting can be made possible at a future date.
I'm happy to second that motion.
Thank you.
And over time councillors, of course, you can do it to all business areas, but you do require the service review to be able to fully implement it.
Okay.
Can I have a write-up reply on mine?
Can I speak to mine?
No, you're not supposed to.
Hold on, the motion goes first, which is councillor Hachidi.
Am I correct in saying, Mayor, that last meeting you ruled that you can't speak on a foreshadowed unless it becomes?
No, you can.
Or you shut me down?
No, you can't, you don't get to write a reply.
Okay.
You wanted to write a reply.
On my one, I'd love one, Mayor. Thanks to the CEO for her comments. Yes, we'll go out to the community to see how often they want their parks mowed. But if we don't know how much money we've got, well then we can't tell them how many times we can mow the parks. The whole idea and the comment was that we've been asking for this through staff, or the staff has been for the last couple of years. And I know as a councillor, I've been saying, "When can we get this done?" I thought officers would be aware that something like this was coming. I don't think this is out of the blue. Councillor's last council meeting, we committed to something or a loan that is massive. And in that, there is a shortfall for some years. And then eventually, when we've all got walking sticks, we will be cash neutral, cash positive on those investments. Every year that goes by, I'm sure everybody does their own budget review pretty much every week, every month, every year in their households. Why is the rate payer dollar not as important? Why aren't we pushing our staff? Sorry, I think everybody knew this was coming, so it's not a big surprise. We should be looking at zero-based budgeting because our rate payers go to work. Some of them at five o'clock in the morning, four o'clock, three o'clock, two o'clock, in congestion, M5, earning their dollars. We need to know what services we're providing, not wait another year, and ensure that they're getting value for their dollar. We committed to a massive loan in the last council meeting. We can keep putting compliance levies on, we can keep raising the parking meter rates, we can keep doing all those things. Or we can look at our budget, we can say, "This is what's working well, this we can change." And in a year, we could save a fortune.
Okay, thank you.
Can I speak against the motion? So I put forward a foreshadowed motion. I think I'm reflecting some, or if not most, of the sentiments of councillor Hachidi. But what I heard from the CEO was that to do it by that 1920 timeline would, you would, you know, you'd be pushing staff unreasonably and you'd end up with a, you know, basically not a good situation. What my motion is saying, saying, "Yep, let's do it, it sounds great, but let's actually have a structured timeline, prioritised by area, what can we do when?" And that we, and then when that comes back, we can debate how reasonable that timeframe is. We can compress it, we can push it out, and then we can hold council staff to it. Then holding them to an arbitrary 1920 and just, you know, dart on the dartboard is probably not the best way to do it.
Any other speakers?
Yes, I'll speak for the foreshadowed motion as well.
Thank you councillor.
The point is that we agree with you councillor Hachidi, that it is a good move for us to do. But what's the point of us pushing it to end up with a result that is not going to satisfy us? We need to be certain that what we are doing, we do it once, we do it right, and that is the basis of the second motion. You don't do it despite the people that have to do it saying, "Well, we don't think we can do it in that timeframe." We've got to work with council for the best interest of Liverpool. We know that what you are saying is a good motion. But you don't push it to the point that you're going to be delivering something which is not going to be the best result. So I'm all in favour of the foreshadowed motion.
Thank you. Anybody who else wishes to speak at this point? Councillor Hachidi, you've got to write a reply.
I assume that I'll take it again, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's my job as a councillor, like all of you guys, councillors, to implement something, and it's the CEO's job to implement what council moves in relation to, is there a timeframe, when does this work well? Sorry, seven months to review a budget, I think, is enough time for everybody to work out where they're spending their money in their departments. And again, apologies if each department head doesn't know where their money is and what they're spending their money on and needs more than six months to work out where they're spending their dollars. I'm not sure if it works different in local government, but I've been part of organisations where you could easily pull up where every cent is going, and I'm sure council can. I don't know what the issue or hard it is to say that this department gets $100,000 or $1 million, and this is where that money is being spent. All that needs to happen now is council officers or department heads need to look and say, "Are we spending that money wisely?" Are all these programmes? Councillor Haggerty said, "Let's get a benefits report on West Rock," which came through. Are we getting benefits out of being on the George's River council, whatever that is? What is that costing us? We got an email the other day saying, "Congratulations, council renewed its membership to Cedar or Seaver" or something along those lines. Yep, we're paying $90,000 or $100,000 to love government New South Wales. Is it worthwhile being as part of that organisation? Or do we do it because every other council is in that? If each department doesn't know what they're spending their money on, sorry, but that rings alarm bells straight off the bat.
The CEO wishes to make a comment.
Councillor, can I just add some information to that? The budget review process is thorough. Every manager is required to look at their budget, to justify any budget increases, to review their budget on an annual basis, to look at items of expenditure and to justify them or not to justify them. That is done every single year, and I can absolutely assure you of that. It's also done on a quarterly basis. And if there are any major changes to the budget, then I review them with my CFO to make sure that we can find money to accommodate them or otherwise. What my understanding of zero-based budgeting is that you go back to zero. So you say, okay, in the past, we've been mowing 10 lawns for 10 parks per week. And we're going to go back to zero and we're going to figure out how much it will cost to mow five lawns, seven lawns, 10 lawns, right? That's zero-based budgeting. And then you set your budget according to what your service level expectations are. The reason that we have implemented the service reviews is to work collaboratively with the community to identify what those service levels are. So that will then set the basis for the zero-based budgeting. And I'm concerned that councillors may feel that we don't review the budget. Every line item of the budget is reviewed rigorously by the managers as part of the budget process and by the CFO and his team as part of the budget process. There's zero-based budgeting, which is working through what your service level might be, which is why children's services, for instance, is very easy to do it because you have a cap number of places and then you can roll up from that cap number of places. That's far more complex to do when we haven't gone for the service level reviews and completed them yet. The plan is to stagger that out through areas of council with the city presentation area being the start because that's the one that really is the focus for most of the community's analysis and because we've had interest around the four-day week as well, so tie that in. And then look at doing the zero-based budgeting there and so on throughout the organisation. So certainly it's not that council staff are not supportive of what you're saying. In fact, they're extremely supportive. And it's something that we have, as you flagged, been aware that council have been looking to us to do. But to do it effectively, I personally feel we need to do those service reviews as well. We can certainly accelerate some of those and bring you forward more of that zero-based budgeting for the next financial year. But I don't think we would have the rigorous work done to really get to where you're wanting us to get to in the 1920 year, across the whole business.
Thank you, we've had the explanation, we've had a write-up reply. I'm going to put the motion as moved by councillor Hachidi and seconded by councillor Ayad. Those in favour, please raise your hands. Those against? Okay, those in favour of the motion, please stand. Those against, please stand. Okay, thank you. I'm going to now put the motion as moved by councillor Haggerty and seconded by councillor Rhodes. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Those against? Clarit carried. Next item is on page...
Madam Mayor, was that unanimous?
264.
Voice. Mayor, again, I'll move this if I find a second.
I'll second.
Mayor, you'll probably be aware because yourself and councillor Carney have been around the longest.
Yes, we have.
Back in 2001, according to what I could find out there, council moved to do this ring road. Unfortunately, due to, and we had this discussion this afternoon, which I won't raise in open, some circumstances. Back then, council wasn't able to purchase the land and close off the other one. In the last term, the land was purchased, money was spent, the rate payer dollar that could be sitting in the bank earning interest or could be used to get more street sweepers out there or clean up all the cigarette butts that are in the CBD. But we purchased a piece of land for the purpose of building a road. Based on the advice received, from what I believe, from the council offices at the time, and it'll be easy for somebody to respond and say, "Well, that was a different person, so the advice would have been different to now." But council bought that piece of land for the ring road to connect, open it up, close off Perry Street, build some more parking spots. I understand that it's been pushed into the two-to-four-year plan or one-to-three-year plan or whatever it is. But in relation to the memo received from the CEO, I thank you for that as part of your Thursday thing. The only thing that I could see that was holding this up was some funding. This is proposing, we've got money there. Based on the advice, when we purchased the land, said, "Buy it for us, we'll build you a road." We bought it, what I'm asking for is build a road.
Thank you, any speakers against?
I would like to foreshadow a motion.
What is your motion councillor?
I would like that motion to be exactly the same as this motion.
Yep.
With the words, "That council, subject to RMS approval." I could, gave us some help on the word approval, but...
Madam Mayor, can I ask a question before he finishes his motion?
No, wait a minute, we're just on a...
Yeah, that council's subject to RMS. Is approval the word? I'm looking in that general direction. Yeah, okay, good.
Thank you.
Mayor happy for point one at the end after the project to include subject to any approvals needed.
Yep, okay.
I mean, you'd need it anyway, but if it keeps councillor Haggerty happy...
All right, councillor Rhodes?
Just because this was in 2001, and there are councillors here that weren't on council at that particular time. We know that we've had RMS traffic studies done, and I thought there was a detailed plan done of the traffic of the CBD. Was this proposal about what is being suggested, the Bathurst Street ring road?
Was this, um, proposal about what is being suggested, Bathurst Street ring road, was that not included in the RMS studies or wasn't it addressed in the more recent? And if not, why not?
Uh, councillor, I'll have to take that question on notice for you, and we'll get you back some information on that.
Okay, any other, yes councillor Hall?
Yes, just a couple of issues on this. Uh, I have no problems with putting the ring road in, I think that should have been done a long time ago, and I'm, I'm familiar with the money that was raised by the, by the sale of lands and so on. My concern is that this is not going far enough. There is the prob, if we build this road, basically it's instead of Peary Street, what are we going to do with Peary Street? What, we, we've talked about in previous master plannings or concepts for that, we've talked about parking, underground, above ground, all of those issues. I think we need to discuss this as well, and it needs to come to, I believe, a briefing session where we're giving far more details than most of us have. Bear in mind that the new councillors that we've got this term were not privy to some of the things that were suggested with Peary Street.
Can I quickly?
Thank you.
Mayor, if you don't mind, in.
Yep.
With Peary Street, I'm happy for anyone to add in that we then come at the same time with plans for a car park or another building and underground. What I thought I'd do is slowly, slowly, so I didn't scare too many people, because so far I'm on half a motion. I was hoping to at least get to two, and I thought if we do it stage by stage, once this comes back to us, if all goes well in June nineteen, we then look at Peary Street, if that is closed off, what is that worth? What can we do there? How can we fund that road? And then look at more plans, but before we actually get design for that to know that it actually, we can do it and it works. There's no point thinking about the car park that, yes, we did promise.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, councillor.
Uh, there's reference to closing Peary Street, can I just get clarification on what section of Peary Street that is?
Yeah, between Terminus and Scott, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And I have another question. I just need clarification that the concept detailed designs, is that in correlation to the whole CBD traffic plans?
Uh, not, in, in reference to this, it does refer to specifically that, that aspect of Bathurst Street that's currently being used as a car park. However, councillor, councillor Hall picked it up accurately, that you can't just do this type of planning in isolation, and what happens to Peary Street is critical to how you would do the design work for Bathurst Street, and we would certainly have to take that into consideration, and RMS would require us to take that into consideration as well.
So can we perhaps work on the motion a little bit, um, councillor, so that that is clear, that this is done in, um, collaboration to the CBD traffic control plans?
It has to be.
It has to be?
Yeah. You can't do it in isolation, councillor.
So are we going to get a traffic plan of the CBD included in these concept plans?
The, 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 the concept plans speak to the design work, um, however, you can't do design work that puts a road into a road network without consideration of the other roads within that road network, so we would have to do some of that work as well in terms of the planning.
But it will include the traffic flow through the whole CBD, say from the Hume Highway at the northern end down to the southern end that we're talking to with a design of the traffic flow for the CBD?
Um, I'm not, that's not what this is asking for. I'm, I'm no traffic engineer, but my understanding was, is that it would need, I'm looking at both Mr Moore and Mr Otter to help back me in on this one, it would need to, um, need to take into account the aspects that are affected by any change that you would make to Bathurst Street. It wouldn't necessarily take into account the whole CBD or, or send parts of the LGA, because they may not be specifically affected by a change, but we would have to, um, work through the process to determine which areas would be affected, and that would become part of the design work, but it's not going to give you a whole traffic study necessarily. Yeah?
Yeah, that's correct. We need to do modelling, and the modelling will be influenced by some of the traffic movement in all of the streets in the CBD.
So that modelling would include the whole of the CBD? What I'm getting to, you can't just look at this in isolation, you've got to look at it in conjunction with the whole CBD traffic issues. And that does that, so my question was, and that is covered in this motion?
Yeah.
Okay, um.
Well, Madam Mayor, just a question, what happened to the model we have received years ago? Are we going to, you know, are you going to propose a new model in regard of traffic? Because what, what we've been told years ago, it's only this section left to complete your ring and the circle, circle surrounding the CBD. So that's why we bought this, this part of, of, of land, just to complete the circle. So what happened to the traffic model we have received years ago, year after year? Are we going to change it every year or, or what? I don't know.
They'll start with that at the beginning, councillor, and build on it. That'll be the starting point. I'm going to put it, those in favour of this, please raise your hands. Those against? Carried.
All right, one and a half, so I'll move the next one.
Okay, second. Thank you.
And again, quickly, a report was put to council, buy this land, let's do something with it. We had some plans to do a centre of excellence that fell through. We have a big parcel of land there that I don't know if we're even mowing, because it probably doesn't need to, uh, be mowed, so this is asking for, go out to the community with this blank piece of paper, there's obviously constraints on the land, totally understand, and ask the community what they believe they would like to see there, then we can factor that into probably the zero-based budget in two thousand and twenty, um, if there are any funds left for us to spend in that year.
Yep, okay, the second up, yes, sorry councillor, I have the second up. Any discussion? I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, carried. Next one, councillor.
I'll move that one, but just, sorry, clarification, I think I've got this wrong. Is it changed to the electoral or to the local government act that would be required? Sorry, and I, Dr Google, I think, has left me, left me down. Yeah, sorry, can I just change that to the local government act? And I'll have a chat with Dr Google. I'll speak for it. We generally hear issues at a federal level when someone nominates in an area that they don't live in, we hear it on a state level, yet somehow it's sort of not recognised on a local level, where pretty much, as long as you're sponsored in, which is one of the options, you can then go to a community that you may have no connection with whatsoever and decide that community's future, what they can do, decide their budget, all this is asking for. Surely there are ten people who either live in Liverpool, or sorry, eleven, live in Liverpool or work in Liverpool that would be fit to run for Liverpool council. Surely you've got to have some connection, and I see councillor Rhodes' finger on that button, I'll give you a chance in a sec councillor, um, surely there's eleven people in our local government area of, we're going to be, what, four hundred thousand people, some young, some old, that could sit around this table, that actually live here or contribute to rates. If they don't, they should be running in the council area that they actually live in or pay rates in. I can't see why people from the outside can come into a particular area and determine the budget or the policies of that area. Now, I'll make it brief here, because I'm sure I'm going to need my writer reply.
I have a question, Mayor.
Councillor Hagerty, what's your question?
So if I understand this motion correctly, what it's saying is that, that people can run for local government if they don't live in that local government area, do I understand that correctly? Yep, okay, well then, the follow-up question to that is, are there any members of this current council who fit that criteria?
Uh, currently, I do at the time of the election. Um, no, I was a resident and a ratepayer. Unfortunately, due to circumstances, I am no longer a resident or ratepayer, but I see Liverpool every morning, um, from my front yard.
Um, okay.
Any others besides councillor Hachiti?
Um, I'll, I'll have to take that on notice, I don't have people's addresses in my back pocket, councillor.
Surely you could just ask councillors?
Uh, no, no, I am not going to allow that to happen as the chair. I understand the motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to clarify, I'm a ratepayer. Thank you.
I live in Green Valley and I'm a ratepayer.
Madam Mayor, point of order, is there a second to this motion?
Yes, there is, I will second this motion, thank.
There is a second. Um, now councillor, you had your, your button on. Councillor Rhodes?
Okay, well, madam mayor, I will do a foreshadowed motion. Not that I am in, uh, opposition to the intention of this motion, but I find that the motion is a little simplistic. My motion would read, write to the state local government minister and the opposition local government minister, government, requesting the changes to the electoral act in order to ensure that a person wishing to nominate for a particular council area must either be a ratepayer, resident or operate a business within the LGA and registered on the residential and non-residential, um, registers. Um, but I go further, madam mayor, because this doesn't end there, there are a lot of people.
Sorry, point of.
Oh, you haven't finished my motion.
It doesn't matter, point of order, you have to stop.
Are we moving a motion or getting into debate?
Moving a motion. I'll continue on.
Thank you. Thank you.
It is also necessary, the things that the constituents are complaining about is the quality of the councillors that we.
Hold on, councillor, what is your?
In that, if you'll let me finish, B, have suitable qualifications such as the local government director's course, or be compelled to enrol in such course in their first term of the first year. And that is my point B as to what we should be going for. And point C, must not miss any more than three council committees and/or council meetings in succession without providing reasonable cause or follow the same, uh, criteria for council meetings. But we go further than this, the, and let's make it number D, let's investigate the reason, uh, let's also ask the local government to consider whether we should have real estate agents or developers as councillors.
Uh, point, point of order, Mayor.
Yes, councillor?
That casts a assertion on two particular groups of people and is very offensive, and I want an apology, being a licensed real estate agent, in relation to that, because I think councillor is saying that those people are not worthy, but advertising people are worthy of being on council.
Councillor, I'm not upholding your point of order mainly because the councillor was just giving a list of people, just as you did, in regards to who should be a ratepayer. Continue, please councillor, but please make sure you read out your motion, don't enter into debate.
That is A, B, C and D of my motion.
That's your motion now?
Now I will speak to them.
Hold on, you've got a second. Councillor Hall, do you wish to speak to your motion, councillor?
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. It is very important that people seeking nomination for local government can substantiate their legal right to represent the people of their LGA. In reference to the councillor's suggestion that some councillors are sponsored, that is not entirely correct. What has to happen is that you have to be nominated by a business to represent them. So there is a business who is paying rate, rates in the local government area, and because they often go overseas, they are not available, they can then put forward a person to represent that business and that ratepayer. That is not a sponsored councillor. Point one. But restricting the nominations from ratepayers and residents is missing a very large number of businesses, both large and, and small, that are contributing to our LGA by providing employment services and community engagements. The LGA needs businesses to enable a livable community, without businesses you don't have jobs. Not all businesses own their premises from which they operate in the LGA, and therefore they have to lease their premises, so they're not ratepayers, they are lease payers. The landowners who pay the rates may not live in the LGA where they pay the rates on the property they own, and yet, um, they then are the people who are able to nominate somebody to stand for that business because they are a vital part of the Liverpool LGA. So it's too simplistic to suggest that we restrict the local government representation from only ratepayers and/or residents. Business owners operating within the LGA but not, uh, paying rates are currently able to nominate, and so they should, because their businesses are contributing just as much to the livability of the LGA as do the ratepayers, perhaps more, because they contribute to the sustainability of the city, because they provide employment opportunities. Fortunately, the electoral office has thought about this and about all the complicated issues therein, and they have very strict guidelines, as it is, as to who can nominate to represent local government, and that restricts, uh, the opportunity to nominate as a councillor to those people who are registered on the LGA resident or non-residential role. So, however, being legally entitled to be a councillor is only half the story. Councillors, it's necessary to have the qualifications to do the job, surely. It is vital that people elected as councillors are educated in the necessary skills to be able to perform their duties as a councillor with due diligence. Anyone elected to council must have local government director's course qualification or enrol in the course in their first term. This would improve the ability of councillors to be able to do the job. Uh, this qualification will mean very little if you do not attend all the council and committee meetings. So in order to perform your duties with due diligence, I would also like to see that these bodies lobby for there to be some degree of governance over people, over the councillor's necessity to attend committee meetings as well as council meetings. So in view of the real estate or developers being on council, we know that they have already been removed from planning panels, so there, there is obviously concern about, uh, them in that due diligence part of council. But the thing that has been overlooked, that they make decisions on zonings, um, and so you would have to question.
Sorry, so are, are we hitting down the track again?
Excuse me councillor, thank you. What's your point of order?
Are we, and, and I'm finding it very offensive here that a councillor could be suggesting that based on your employment, you would make a decision, where there's a local government act, there's all these bodies that look at us, and tonight, anyone can be watching, um, that she is saying, from what I understand. Councillor, sorry, is saying that developers and real estate agents would change their decision because of their occupation. I'd seek an apology for asserting that on these type of people.
Um, councillor Rhodes, I think you do need to, uh, sort of apologise for any inference, but.
Madam Mayor, I won't apologise, I'll explain a little further.
No, no, my real.
No, well, I'm not going to apologise, madam mayor, they've already removed developers and real estate agents from planning panels.
Councillor, you are out of order, and as you are out of order, I can rule that you be removed from this meeting. I don't want to do that, you are a good contributor to this committee, I do not want to do this, but you are out of order. I've asked you to apologise, and I've asked you to apologise to councillor Hachiti for the inference that he has taken, but you may continue your discussion talking broadly about different professions having restrictions.
That is exactly what I'm talking about, madam mayor.
Can you apologise, please?
Uh, ma, madam mayor, would councillor Hachiti like to apologise for the inference, inference about.
Sorry, point, point of order, Mayor.
I am going to move, I'm giving you another warning councillor, you are to apologise to councillor Hachiti, or I will move that you be removed from the meeting this evening.
Councillor Hachiti, I apologise profusely.
Thank you.
For the fact that you are a real estate agent and developer that is on council.
Sorry, point of order, Mayor.
Yes, councillor.
Can I move that she gets removed?
Uh, I can do that, you can't, but I, you can call a point of order, councillor.
My point of order is councillor has now just, whatever it is, that I am now also a developer. On what basis is she?
Councillor Rhodes, not she.
Sorry, on what basis is councillor Rhodes suggesting that I am a developer? Are you aware of my business, and where'd you get your information from? Because I'm seriously now considering my options in relation to your comments, and I'm glad it's being recorded.
Madam Mayor, I'm referring to those people who have been removed from planning panels.
Point of order, Mayor.
Yes.
It was clear that I am now a real estate agent and a developer?
Councillor, will you apologise for the faulty information that you've. Councillor, will you apologize for the faulty information that you've given to the council at this?
So let's clarify, you're a real estate agent, not a developer? I don't know what he is.
Councillor? That's enough councillor Hachidi. You will be on equal strife. Shush. Councillor, I would like you to apologize and.
I apologize councillor Hachidi.
I move that the councillor no longer be heard, Madam Mayor.
Your second up?
Yep.
Thank you, I'll put it, those in favour, those against. Do it again, those in favour, those against. The motion is not going forward. Councillor, I think you've finished and thank you for your motion. I think you'll move on for the sake of peace in our time.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment if that's okay with you. Just for everyone's sake here at council, developer is a word that is used quite freely. I mean, what is the actual meaning of developer? How many developments do you have to do a year to be classified as a developer? How much money do you have to make a year to be classified as a developer?
And say there is a definition, there's several. There's one for electoral funding, there's another one in regards to the act and the planning panels, so there's.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, I'd like to move a foreshadowed motion please.
What is your foreshadowed motion councillor?
Yes, I would like to receive and note the CEO's comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you, seconded.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Have we got a second up for councillor Ayad's motion that they receive and note the CEO's comments?
I might second it after my question.
What is your question councillor?
Yeah, the question is to Mr White, the, I'm having regard to section seven, eight A and eight B of the Local Government Act. Can we actually do any of this at all anyway?
Missed the last bit councillor.
Yeah, section seven, eight A and eight B of the Local Government Act, can we actually do any of this?
I can actually answer that because I'm reading the resolution in front of me. It suggests that we're lobbying, we don't have the authority to do it, but we certainly have the authority to lobby.
We can lobby councillor.
Do we actually have the authority to lobby in relation to those areas?
Well councillor, you're incorrect, we do. We have the ability to lobby, that is a role of council. Okay, moving on, we've got a mover and a second, do you got a second of councillor Ayad's motion councillor? Thank you. All right, now I think we've had enough debate on this matter and I think people are clear on it.
Can I have a writer reply on the initial?
Yes councillor, you can have a writer reply.
And in relation to that, I would actually like to include the part about the directors or local government course as suggested in the foreshadowed motion, I think that is a, reluctantly think it's a good idea. So, whatever that.
It's the first motion.
Yep, as part of that, that councillors are enrolled in that course. In relation to this, there were some things raised in the debate in relation to businesses and what they do and everything else. Businesses are an important role and for understanding of some people that may not have an understanding. A business that's a leaseholder of a property, of a commercial lease, you will find that probably in 90% of the cases, if people are aware and did their homework before they came in here and just wanted to talk for the sake of talking, that that business is also a rate payer. Because most leases, commercial leases have outgoing's attached to their lease. So by default, they become a rate payer of our area. Why should someone from Fairfield come into Liverpool and determine what Liverpool wants? Why should someone from Camden?
Point of order Madam Mayor.
Yes councillor?
Madam Mayor, is councillor Hachidi singling me out?
No, I don't believe he is and I'm not upholding the point of order.
Why should someone from Camden come into Liverpool?
He mentioned Camden as well.
And run for thing. If people think this is about, I'm not a resident at the moment, nor am I a rate payer. So this is not about an attack on any person that might be precious, that may want to nominate for a council in any area. I currently, if this was to get through, would not be eligible to run for Liverpool council. But it's something that I believe in, so if it's something I believe in, I'll put it forward. So for people that want to take this personally and need Kleenex, I'm sure we can supply Kleenex.
Point of order Madam Mayor.
Yes councillor?
Madam Mayor, the councillor needs to apologize for his comments as if councillors need a Kleenex that we're being emotionally disturbed or something like that. We need to keep this argument on a level which is respectful to all councillors.
The last part of your argument I agree with. The first part, I think we'll just put it down to theatrical behaviour. The Kleenex is, I think, should be removed from your comments.
I'll remove the Kleenex and I didn't mention any particular person.
Or any particular brand of tissue.
Brand of tissue. So for anyone that thinks this is an attack on an individual person, that person, or that, I better be careful here.
Yes, you do.
People need to realise that it's not an attack, it's about the local government area. If you want to make decisions about a local government area, have an interest in the local government area. Work in here and be a lease payer and you'd be paying rates because your outgoing's would be. Live in the area, buy a property in the area. There are many options where you can become a resident or a rate payer. Don't just sit here from the outside and drive into here and I'm not sure if everybody drives into Liverpool every day. I know I do, I walk across the road with the dog every morning and I'm in Liverpool. But come into Liverpool, be part of the community, then make decisions about Liverpool. I'm affected, if anyone takes it personally, that's their prerogative.
That will be fine, thank you.
Do I have a writer reply?
No, you don't councillor, you're in the foreshadowed section.
So there's no point in me saying that I've worked.
Move that the motion be put.
Be quiet please councillor, you don't have the right of reply and that is that. I'm going to put the motion as moved by councillor Hachidi and seconded by councillor Ayad. Nominating to become a councillor with the extra bits in it, those in favour, please raise your hand. Those against, the motion is upheld and the foreshadowed motions have collapsed, thank you. Next item on the agenda is six nine.
Excuse me Madam Mayor, can I just interrupt there? I note that we missed presentations.
Oh, you have some presentations.
I have a presentation.
We're not finished yet.
No, but presentations was before the notices of motion.
Oh, okay, I apologize. All right, before we go into confidential, have you got a presentation?
I have a presentation. I was honoured to represent yourself, Madam Mayor, at the, at an event on Sunday. And that event was the, I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, but the Shana Shiel Iraqi Cultural Festival. And it was a great festival. They, basically the group that runs this is the Iraqi Graduates Association, something like that. Sorry for getting that wrong, but Iraqi Australian University Graduate Forum. And they're a fantastic group and they are multi, you know, cross-denominational, cross-ethnic, cross-cultural group of Iraqis that do some very fantastic work. There was a speech by a Dr Al Maderas who came here as someone seeking asylum, was locked away in curtain detention centre, was treated, in my opinion, very badly and has now gone on to become a world leading orthopedic surgeon, especially in the area of robotic limbs. And he was inspired by the movie Terminator. He's also a squadron leader in the air force and he basically gets a whole bunch of fellow orthopedic surgeons and they go over to Iraq a couple of times a year and basically at no cost to themselves, you know, to help people with new limbs. So fantastic gentleman and a credit to the Iraqi Australian community. And basically for, you know, we gave them a $10,000 grant a couple of months ago. And the event was also held at the Kasula powerhouse, the powerhouse. And they were kind enough to present this.
Wow.
This, hold it up to the camera there so everyone can see it. Iraqi Australian University Graduate Forum in appreciation presented to Mayor Wendy Waller in appreciation of your kind support to Iraqi Cultural Festival and Iraqi community. There was also one for councillor Nathan Hagerty, I didn't bring that one along, it's already on the wall, pride of place. Do I have to declare an award? Anyway, that's my presentation.
Thank you so much for that presentation councillor. Now we're moving on to page six nine seven of the confidentiality items. Right councillor, I'll second it, thank you councillor, any discussion? Oh, okay, yep. Yep. Oh, you can go behind the curtain, it's a bit of a distance, yeah, you're just not allowed to be seen so you don't intimidate anybody. No, you can't be seen, you just can't be seen. No, hide. Thank you councillor Hachidi and Ayad, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried, bring him back. She's coming slowly, can you get councillor Caliander somebody, please? Okay, the next item is contract extension project manager accelerated LEP review.
Seconded, thank you Madam.
Thank you councillors, any discussion? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried. Next item is on page 219.
I've got a motion.
Yes councillor?
Does anyone need to leave?
Yes, he's left, he's behind the curtain. Caliander hasn't come back in, so it's fine, keep going.
Yep, that, how do we do it and how do I say this?
You adopt the recommendations with the.
I don't want to adopt the recommendation.
With the exception of whatever the title of that is. The award title.
Yep, and adopts that without, with the exception of the small business award.
Okay, second up. Councillor Carnib, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, cleric carried, next item, come back everyone.
Can we have that count again, Madam Mayor?
Those in favour.
Does someone want an explanation on that before everyone gets excited?
You have to be careful, I'll do it, I'll do it.
Thank you.
What's happened is there wasn't a nomination, so without a nomination, they decided to put somebody into that position that applied last year, which isn't appropriate. Okay, so that's why, okay, come back, all right. Those, no, that's fine, it's gone through. The next item is O four, which is a tender, it's on page seven nine nine. Diesel fuel.
Yeah, move that way, thank you.
Move that way councillor Shelton, seconded, councillor Carnib, I'll put it, it's hot stuff, it's going, going, gone. Those in favour, those against, cleric carried unanimously for the typist. The last item is on page 817, have your confidentiality documents. Okay. Someone like to make a move a motion? Councillor Caliander just moved her hand, I'll put Caliander. Councillor Nathan Hagerty stood up and waved his hand around, so councillor Hagerty. Any other discussion on the matter? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, cleric carried, meeting closed, thank you.